Okay, thank you.
Recording in progress.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. Good evening and welcome to the Easton School Committee meeting of Thursday, November 14th, 2024. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format. Attendance by committee members may be remote and remote attendance shall count for quorum. This meeting is open to the public. Members of the public who are in attendance, who would like to participate in the public comment section later in the agenda will be invited to do so at that time and will need to state their name and address before beginning their comments. This evening attending remotely for voting members, we have Jackie Wiseman. Jackie, can you can hear us and we can hear you?
Yes.
Great, thank you. And for voting members in the room, we have Nancy DeLuca and Lauren Loomis. I'm Jen Starr. And for non-voting members, we have our student representative, our member, Superintendent Dr. Cabral, and Assistant Superintendent Pruitt. All right, so with that, our meeting is called to order and we can move to the first item on the agenda, which is a vote to accept a donation for Blanche Ames from Alltown Coffee. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. Principal Cedarbaum is here to present a donation from Alltown Coffee to events that the total is being brought forward to you tonight for your consideration of acceptance. Mr. Cedarbaum?
Perfect. Good evening, thank you, everyone. So, the pre-K to two schools have partnered with Alltown Fresh since about 2020. Before we became Blanche Ames, they were partnered up with Center School and did some fundraisers with Center. And then as we became one, we continued to be their partner school for the town. And so now we're working with them at Blanche Ames. Previously, we had conducted two fundraisers a year. We did a car wash fundraiser in both the fall and the spring. And those funds were donated to the PACs. As we have come together and looked at the fundraisers that are currently being run by the PAC, we've decided that the funds from the Alltown fundraisers would be donated to an account at the school so that I would have that discretion to use for additional programming, enrichment, materials, things like that. So, we started off this year with a brand-new initiative, which went really well. They were doing cheers to a new school year. They were offering all educators, no matter if you were an educator in Easton or a partnering district, but any educator that came in in the month of September could get one free coffee a day if they showed their ID. It was hugely popular. And then, in addition, they were collecting 20 cents from every cup of coffee sold to donate back to us at Blanche Ames. So, in the month of September, Alltown Fresh at Easton sold 5,500 cups of coffee. So, they presented us with a donation of $1,100.
So much.
The following month, in October, we held our Fall Car Wash. For every car wash that they do in a given weekend, it was October 5th and 6th this year, they donate $5 for every car that goes through their car wash. And for any car that signs up for the unlimited club, they donate $20. Over the past couple of years, we've unfortunately had weekends with poor weather, so we haven't garnered as much through the car wash fundraiser. But this year, we had beautiful weather that weekend and they were able to donate another $700. So, I am asking for an acceptance of $1,800 in donations that will go into an account for Blanche Ames.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions, comments from school committee members?
It's a wonderful donation and I make a motion, we accept it.
Okay, before we make the motion, I just have like one, just one quick and illustrative question. So, in terms of accounting, yeah, so where, how does, how does that work when funds go directly to a school?
Yeah, so right now, we are basically going to utilize that elementary student family activity account because we're no longer collecting revenues from the parents for Blanche Ames and Richardson Olmsted. We're going to convert that over for use where the revenues and expenditures, it's a revolving account will match. And then, Mr. Cedarbaum will have discretion to send those funds based on the donations that are coming into that account.
Okay, all right, great, thank you. Okay, so now-
Make a motion to accept the donation of $1,800 from Alltown Coffee.
Can I get a second?
Second, Loomis.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes?
Loomis, yes.
All right, great.
Wonderful.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming on a busy night.
Yes.
Enjoy conferences. Okay, so, let's see. We were, Dr. Cabral and I were discussing before the meeting began that we may need to move some items around in the agenda because she is, her presence is needed at another important meeting in town to represent the school department's perspective on something. So, looking through though, I think we can probably get through the minutes pretty quickly. And I know we definitely want you here for the budget review. And at that point, we can, I think, do a time check and see if we, at that point, move the executive session up-
Okay.
-in the agenda and then resume with the rest of our, with the rest of our agenda. So, let's see. And we also have the R.O. handbook, we'll come right after minutes, so that's, we won't move that around. You know, you've got stuff going on tonight, too. Okay, all right, great. So, so next item then will be the vote to approve minutes. So, our packets, we have minutes from the September 12th executive session and September, nope, October 24th executive session. So, let's tackle those two first. So, the exec session minutes from September 12th. Before we possibly vote to approve with or without releasing, does anybody want to hold these over for further discussion in an executive session? Okay, all right. So then, I make a motion to approve the minutes from the executive session of September 12th, but not to release at this time. Can I get a second?
DeLuca, okay, go ahead.
Second, Loomis.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Okay. And then, the executive session minutes from Thursday, October 24th, I make a motion to hold these for further review in executive session. Can I get a second?
DeLuca, second.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Okay. Regular session minutes from September 12th, Thursday, September 12th. So, Lynn, I had one small typo. It was on page three in the superintendent notes paragraph. About halfway through the paragraph, it was just a misspelling of core, just a typo in the word "coreeem."
I had the same one.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions, comments, or edits on the September 12th? All right, so I make a motion then to approve the minutes from September 12th. Can I get a second?
Wiseman, second.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes? Okay. Let's see, next up, let's do the workshop minutes from October 17th. Any questions, comments, or edits? I didn't have any.
The only, I see the last word missing-
Oh.
On playground update, the last word of that paragraph should be warrant. Town warrant.
Oh, okay, thank you. So, that's in the update on the playground, second paragraph?
Right, at the end, there's a missing word.
Right there?
Yes, the warrant, yes.
Okay.
To the town meeting warrant, to be specific.
Okay, all right. So Lynn, that was update on the playground, end of the second paragraph in that section. And the words that were omitted were town meeting warrant. Anything else for the 17th? Okay. So, I make a motion to approve the workshop minutes for October 17th with the noted edit. Can I get a second?
DeLuca, second.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Thank you. And then finally, the minutes from our regular meeting on Thursday, October 24th. Any questions, comments, or edits? I didn't have any. Okay, I'm not hearing any. I'll make a motion then to approve the regular session minutes from October 24th. Can I get a second?
Wiseman, second.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Okay, all right, great. Next up on the agenda, we have a vote to approve the 2024-2025 Richardson Olmsted Student Family Handbook. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. The process for the handbook, as we have discussed in the past, goes through the school council that meets regularly. At the beginning of the school year, Mr. Getchell met with the council and reviewed the handbook for corrections. We also had our Director of D E I A review school committee policy references as well as legal references. And Mr. Getchell is bringing it before you this evening for a potential vote of acceptance from the school committee. Welcome, Mr. Getchell.
Hello, thank you. Thank you for having me today. I'll try to keep this brief. I do like to, would like to thank our school council at R.O., and the parents and teachers. We vetted this yearbook handbook through multiple meetings last year, it was a lot of work. I also would like to acknowledge Carol Perez for vetting all of the legal documents and references. The updated bullying prevention plan in particular has been put in here. She was very helpful. I'd also like to thank Olivia Ramos, our Instructional Technology Director. She vetted all of the exceptional use policies, making related technology that her hands on. She was very helpful. And there's many facets up here in this handbook that have been reviewed by committees at R.O. like our PBA IS committee regarding behavior, our response to behavior. We also took careful consideration to align the formatting of the handbook to the Easton Middle School handbook that I know was passed last year so that in terms of how it's set up, in terms of table of contents, we changed that around so it's, it mirrors Easton Middle School. I know Blanche Ames is also working on theirs now. I know the principals and school councils are trying to align the way these handbooks look so parents have an easier time navigating them as they go K through 12. So, those efforts made there. Just to highlight some of the major changes, you know, our attendance code and policies have changed. All of that has been updated in the first couple of pages. Our communication systems with parents, with parent square being lodged, has been a big initiative that is included in our communication system. How we ask parents to report tardies, dismissals through the R.O. attendance line has been updated. I mentioned our policies on electronic devices, Apple Watches, things that come up a lot all have been updated. Our grade level teams, grades three, four, and five, updated their homework practices and across the grade level. So, we have consistency in homework expectations across grade three, grade four, and grade five. All of that, those expectations are in the appendix of the handbook. So, it creates more consistency across grade levels. Let's see, I'm just flipping through, highlighting just major changes. Our disciplined positive behavioral systems, starting on page 26, that was completely overhauled, honestly. We have put in our R.O. constitution, our positive behavioral intervention systems that we have in place at our school, examples of them, how we respond when an agreement is broken at R.O. We have both consequences in the restorative practices that we detail in here. Particularly, the last page of the document, the last appendix is a responding to behavior chart connected to our constitution that's given to all of our staff at R.O. So, our students see similar responses to behavior from teachers across the grade level specialists. We all use that. And I know B.A. has a similar model and I think even the assistant principals with Carol's is creating a more district-wide response to behavior quo conduct. So, you know, R.O., like the district, is trying to align the way we do school as best we can. And we made a conscious effort to try to do so in revision of this handbook. So, those are just some of the highlights again. The newly accepted bullying prevention from May 2024 is in here. So, I think we are up to date and looking for a vote of approval so we can share this with our families.
Okay.
Any questions or comments that we have to mention?
Jackie?
Hi, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Getchell. It really looks like you and your team put in a lot of work to the handbook and it looks, it looks really good. I really liked that responding to behavior chart you put in. I think that made it very clear to, to parents exactly what to expect. I think that was a great idea, so thank you for that. Just one little thing, I don't have it in front of me, but I think there was a reference to admin still at 50 Oliver Street. I think it was on page 24. So, just one little edit. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? I real, I love this chart. I would, is there, is there, I know you mentioned, yes, go ahead.
It's no fault of anyone, but later in the agenda, this will include reviewing some policies which may not change the, some of the policies that are of a site that we're carrying on.
Okay.
So, just to keep that in mind.
Okay.
Mr. Getchell stated it, but for the community, it's important for them to know that R.O. and B.A. have now split their handbooks where in the past it was a K to five handbook.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, just so that the community knows that.
Thank you, Carol, good point.
And also, the vision statement, I think, is from the previous and not the, not the current. Or is that just a little bit?
I wasn't sure if I could put that in here because it hasn't been accepted yet, so I am happy to.
Yep, okay.
And Jackie, you're right about that, page 24. Nice job.
A couple of other small things and one question.
Sure.
I don't think they will affect the vote either, just things that if you could make sure they're incorporated if the school committee votes to accept with edits, this will be part of it. Just, this is just a suggestion. On page eight, when you talk about free lunches, you have seen the process you need to go through to fix this. You want to go through school commi, school council, get a vote, present it to school committee, get their vote. In general, you may want to try to keep things as consistent as possible without having to change it. That could go away as early as next year. But even amending it slightly to say something like, as long as, and then name the program, the Massachusetts free lunch, you know, the name of the program is active, lunch will remain free. That way, it's a little more evergreen for you.
Good suggestion.
And then just things like when you put people's names in it. Sometimes it's necessary, but if not, wherever you can put the position. But I realize sometimes it's necessary because you also have their email for contact and so forth. Just keep that in mind as things that you might need to update. There's a reference on page 27 to click here for the R.O. constitution if it's broken. I think that refers to the appendix at the end.
Yes.
Is it possible to have a link if this is electronic, but then also maybe put in parentheses, see appendix and name the appendix? Because if they read that, they may not realize it is at the end unless they continue. And then the only other thing is, and I'm sure this is true, I just would like to say it out loud in case anybody's watching, the homework policies that are listed are from, are dated as 2019 and I'm sure that those were reviewed and are still current. And if so, you may want to give it a current review date so that it doesn't look like it's something dated that maybe people haven't had eyes on again. And that's all.
Created then, but yes, you're right, I'll, I'll-
You can leave created like school committee does if you'd like and put updated-
Yeah.
-or reviewed, just so that people know you're constantly keeping it up to date.
Great suggestions. I've loaded all of those, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Getchell.
One of the pieces I did want to highlight that I didn't mention earlier is, and I think this comes up a lot, from ages 60 to 62, we really put an effort to define the roles of support services at our school. You know, in the education role, we take for granted that people know what these things are. So, we took time to define what a school psychologist does, a speech and language therapist does, a counseling counselor does at our school, occupational therapist, physical therapist, special education teacher, just their basic roles. And we did put names because we wanted parents to be able to contact those people, but I hear you about those names can change over time.
Yep, you just need to be cognizant to keep it updated, that's all.
But we are trying to make our support services more transparent to everybody, so-
It's a great addition. Hopefully, you'll share it with the other. I know that through Ms. Perez, they're getting shared with the other principals. It would be great for that to be consistently included as well. And I just, I want to also applaud your efforts at working together to do that. We, all the schools, and this is just a global perspective for people that may not realize what we're trying to do, we're not trying to make four cookie cutter schools, obviously. They all have their own lovely culture and traditions and so forth, and we want to maintain that, of course. But there are some things, we call it when we're in our leadership meeting, we call it from the perspective of our consumer or our client, which is our parent and our student, who are here from K through 12 or PK through 12. And there are just some things that don't necessarily have to look and be different and can actually be much easier, as Mr. Getchell very correctly said, for parents to navigate as they're going. And we're looking at our policies that way as well. Again, that's one of the things that Ms. Perez is working on with the assistant principals because she has that overall view of all four schools. So, hopefully, people will be seeing some products being streamlined in that way while, of course, maintaining the developmental and traditional elements of each school that make them very special.
I was just going to suggest that you might want to, instead of having names, have a link to a staff directory that gets consistently updated. Just an idea.
Sure.
Just things we've learned from school committee policy work.
Yes.
It's a great suggestion.
Nancy and Jackie are like, oh. Okay, all right, any other, any other comments? I was just saying, I really, I love, I love this matrix at the back and I, I think it would be helpful at all levels, right? It's, yeah.
To, to Mr. Getchell's credit, he's been using it for years. It just hasn't been in the handbook. But now Blanche Ames and as of last year, the middle school is also using it with the necessary tweaks for grade level.
Yeah, yep.
So, but it started at Richardson Olmsted, so great job with that.
That's great, yeah, fine, yeah. I would imagine it's just super helpful for like parents and staff to understand and not have it just be a gray area, right? Subject to everybody's opinion.
Or subject to the teacher that you're, you're telling.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, so, I know we proposed or gave a lot of editorial feedback from a procedural perspective, school committee. Are we comfortable with approving with all of the noted feedback? Or do we want to see a version come back to us at our next meeting that could also incorporate the, some of the changes, if necessary, to some of the policies that we're going to review later?
So, as we were going through this and I thought about us voting on it, I would just as soon vote with the changes, but think of this as a living document-
Yeah.
-that can be corrected, updated, maneuvered, as be, when needed.
For, not for substantive conversation items-
No, but just-
Like, for example, a policy, a school committee policy.
Or a spelling error or something like that.
Administrative updates, reference.
That's what I, I didn't mean like for a big thing.
Yep, no, just for clarifying for the record. And Lynn's taking note of all this, too. If you forget anything, I want to double-check with her.
Okay, all right.
I mean, really, we create these three yearly updates. I mean, that's why the year is on them. In the past, we always updated them every year, it's just that we haven't done it in a while. So, I anticipate that the minimum once a year updating, but certainly as things come across. This should be living documented and updated whenever we need to.
Yeah, and I think in terms of, you know, future coming to the school committee, you know, what we typically would see going forward, I know this was a substantial rewrite, would just be a red line-
Exactly.
-so that we can just quickly go through and see what was updated and direct our attention to that. And then, you know, if something is, again, a more substantive rewrite of a whole section or the structure, then it would, we'd have a longer conversation about it. But for the most part, I think we've been, I think the, the schools have been doing the work of getting things sort of updated and in, in a good place. I know, you know, for example, the poor middle school, we probably sent theirs back a number of times, but, you know, got it, got it into a place where we were happy with it. Because it's a lot, like documentation, all this. And again, our policy committee is well aware of the pain of keeping all this paper up to date.
And in all fairness, it gets complicated as the grade level increases, it just does.
Yep, yep, so, okay. So then, I will make a motion. Oh, go ahead, Lauren, sorry.
When this is approved at the least, is it just sent home? Is there an expectation that parents are supposed to sign something in the back?
Good question.
Good question. You typically link it to the website and we refer to it in letters, we might send all the vendors for different instances that, that might happen. It's like a ground document. I will follow the, the procedure that the other schools are following in terms of sign-offs. I'm not, I think we should be in fluxed up with that piece.
Carol's?
So, parents may have noticed that this year for, did you get the packet when schools started of like emergency contact, it was all virtual, there was a sign-off that you read the, the handbook. So, if you are an R.O. or a B.A. parent, you were sending out to the, the previous handbook and you could make sure that we send something out from the new handbook or-
Yes, at the very least, an electronic signature of receipt.
At a Google, we can do a Google form.
Because it is, it is-
It's a contract.
It is a binding document. So, we want to make sure that parents know that it's updated.
Okay, okay, great question.
And then, Olivia, I can help you with that.
Great, thank you.
Okay, all right. So then, I make a motion to approve the Richardson Olmsted Student Family Handbook with the edits as discussed. Can I get a second?
Loomis, second.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes?
Loomis, yes.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Getchell.
Thank you, Mr. Getchell, enjoy conferences.
Okay, now, next item on the agenda is our quarterly budget review. So, do you want us to?
Scooch.
Is, yeah, is this, is the screen up for us? Okay, all right.
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Good evening, school committee members and members of the public. I just wanted to- I'm going to use that one, I just want to make sure.
I was just seeing you.
Oh, thank you, thank you very much.
I don't want to catch the packet.
Yeah, oh, okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you very much. Good evening. I just wanted to highlight a couple of the items that were in your packet from tonight. I will go through them, through the items in more detail at the end of the PowerPoint presentation. So, at first, within your packet, you should have a school budget by DESI code handout. Just a reminder that this was the preferred budget presentation format as directed by the school committee. So at first, within your packet, you should have a school budget by DESI code handout. Just a reminder that this was the preferred budget presentation format as directed by the school committee. Due to the DESI chart of account changes in July of 2022, you will notice differences between the fiscal year '25 adopted budget and some of our prior year formatting regarding the actual presentation via our town of Easton Budget Book. We also have included within your packets a fiscal year '25 budget summary by expense category and also a budget summary by location. And just a reminder, the expense categories listed are salaries and wages, which are their namesake, purchases of services are a lot of our contract services such as transportation, materials and supplies, as their namesake suggests, and other charges and expenses are things such as our printer maintenance, travel, employee reimbursements. Just wanting to highlight as well that each of these reports that you have before you tonight are presented in a format which start with the fiscal year '25 adopted budget or appropriated budget numbers, then they lead into where we're at as of Q1 year-to-date expenditures or 9/30, September 30th of 2024. And then they'll lead into, basically starting on the left, so then as you go towards the right, fiscal year '24 adopted or appropriated budget, and then you end typically with a cross comparison between Q1 of 2025, which is 9/30 2024, versus Q1 of fiscal year 2024, which is 9/30 of 2023. And I'll get into a little bit more of definitions, our fiscal year, just so that helps the public understand what we're looking at, what we're cross comparing. So I'm hoping that is a, just a starting point as a frame of reference of what's included in your packets tonight, and we'll dive into some visuals that provide a little bit more, their visual representations of some of these charts as well.
So if we could go to the.
Yes, thank you very much. So tonight, we're going to begin with a quick overview of key terms. There will be terms that we are not highlighting tonight, but just keeping in the back of our minds for future budget presentations, a refresher on our fiscal year 2025 adopted budget, and as I pointed out before, just various visuals to demonstrate where we are at currently as of September 30th of 2024. So our next slide has our key terms. So tonight, things you may hear, and you might have already heard, the word appropriation. So the definition of that is to include, those are our budget funds, which are set aside by the school committee for specific use within the fiscal year cycle. Then that leads into what is a fiscal year? This is the timeframe in which we conduct our business as Easton Public Schools, and the timeframe in which we evaluate our budget and our actual expenses. For our organization, this is July 1st to June 30th of each year. The number of the fiscal year is represented by the calendar, excuse me, the calendar year in which the fiscal year ends. So for this current fiscal year, as an example, it is represented by the calendar year 2025. It spans from July 1st of 2024 through June 30th of 2025. And then, once again, operating, you'll hear that term used throughout the presentation. We are referring to the budget for which our annual appropriation of funds for ongoing program costs, which include our salaries and wages, as pointed out previously, materials and supplies, purchases of services, and our other charges or expenses. There are other areas such as revolving we'll get into in future presentations, but tonight's focus is on our overall operating budget for the school district for Easton Public Schools. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is just a frame of reference for where we're at with our 2025 adopted budget highlights. We started this fiscal year '24 at a little over $47 million. We had a total increase of a little over $2.7 million. That percentage is 5.78%. That is what we were awarded, and that is what we needed to maintain level service for our school district. The overall adopted budget ending at $49,748,315. We also just want to highlight, as part of our April budget presentation, the reactive essential category to establish where we are at in this current fiscal year. Reminder of what the definition of reactive or essential is. That means we are currently providing staff and/or resources only as a reaction to current, a current need or mandate. We may not fully satisfy that need or mandate with the budget that we have currently appropriated. Just want to highlight, as a reminder for within that category, some of the items we have included on the slide did include pre-K sections and K sections, which were potentially grant funded due to increased enrollment or projected increased enrollment. I'm not going to go into too much detail because those are grant funded, not operating budget, but revolving fund budget. And then, did you want to?
I was just going to add that those weren't necessary in September. We went over that when we were talking about the budget, but they could be at any time, particularly for pre-K. As you know, enrollment is rolling based on when students age three. We did not ask for that in the operating budget, that would be grant funded. So the increase for the year, when we're talking about whether there was $2.7 million worth of growth in the district, it wasn't growth. We added the multilingual, multilingual learner teacher due to increased enrollment, so that's level service, and then EMS AP, again, due to a reactive need. Other than that, the little over 5% that was awarded to the school department was reflective of contractual increases, and that, of course, is not a 5% across-the-board increase, but what it reflects are lanes, steps, benefits, longevity, transportation contract, legal contracts, and so forth. So those are our regular increases for a level service budget for this year.
Thank you. Next slide, please. Thank you very much. So this slide is a representation of where we are at as of 9/30 of 2024 on your left-hand side versus where we were at at 9/30 of 2023 on the right-hand side. This is a really quick snapshot of where we are at with our year-to-date spending. So as of right now through 9/30, we have spent a little over $5.2 million. Out of our $49.7 million budget, we have $44.5 million left as far as what we have remaining to move us through, activity through 6/30 of 2025. When comparing that to the prior fiscal year cycle, we spent $4.9 million at the same time period last year. Our total expense that was appropriated was $47 million. Overall, the difference is about, is $286,000. So we have spent $286,000 through Q1 of 2024, or, sorry, Q1 of fiscal year 2025, over last year's budget. But when looking at what was spent as of this point in time last year, we had spent 10.5% of the budget. We are actually exactly at 10.5% of the budget again in this first quarter. I just want to throw out a disclaimer, please do not expect us to hit that same mark when we're cross comparing each quarter over quarter. That is an anomaly, but that is where we are. We are exactly right on track for the same time period last year. And we'll highlight some of the differences in some of the categories as we move through the presentation, but there's been ebbs and flows. We just happen to be right at 10.5% once again, even with the budget increases and other activities that have happened.
And again, from a balcony viewpoint, we discussed this when we've done other quarterly updates, our budget is not split into 10 school months or even 12 months of a year equitably. We have things that are paid at different times. Longevity for staff, for example, is paid at the end of the year, and so things are paid, coaches are paid at the end of a season, by and large. So there are months where there are larger payments or things that happen later in the year. That's just the nature of contractual obligations, energy use, et cetera.
Exactly, thank you. Next slide, please. Thank you. So this is a visual representation of the high-level expense categories. This matches one of the handouts, that fiscal year '25 budget summary by expense category. That provides you a little bit more detail when looking at the individual expense buckets versus adopted for what has been spent, what remains in the budget, and then comparing against the prior fiscal year. So we have a visual representation of the largest piece of this, as far as our expenses go, is our salaries and wages. We're at 78.2% for this particular fiscal year. The increase of our last year's value is about 6.9% or $264,000. Once again, that includes lane changes, new positions added, overall contractual obligations within our memorandum of understanding within our bargaining, bargaining units. We also have our next category as purchase of services at 14.4%. This category includes special services tuition, transportation, other contract services, utilities, what have you, and then that overall increase was $142,000, 23.4% difference compared to last year. One of the major drivers for that is the timing of our transportation vendor payments to one of our largest transportation vendors. We are working on consistency and our timeliness of payments from an accounts payable perspective. We want to be able to make sure we have longitudinal data from an accounts payable perspective, and a lot of the differences that you see between Q1 of fiscal year '24 versus Q1 of fiscal year '25 are merely timing differences, where we might be paying something in advance of when we paid in the prior fiscal year. So the cross comparison kicks out from an analytical perspective, or paying something later than we did in the previous year. So I'm calling out some of the major changes, but I would say about 95% of what I'm seeing is timing differences across the different, larger, some of our larger vendors or larger expense categories. The next category, which is very similar, is our materials and supplies category in that yellow color on the visual representation. This category represents a $129,000 decrease over prior year, and that represents, the majority of that is a timing difference related to WB Mason as one of our vendors for our large purchases that happened at the beginning of the year. We have subsequently paid them in this Q2 of 2025, and you'll see that reflected in our future budget presentations. But like I said, the majority of the timing, the majority of the differences are timing related between some of our larger vendors.
And it's due to a lot of the tightening of the budget that, excuse me, Andrea has been doing and, excuse me, putting into place more prescribed policies and procedures for purchasing so that things are in the appropriate quarters and even the appropriate school years from when they're expended. So this is, this is a positive reflection, and instead of, for example, pre-purchasing supplies for a fiscal year in the preceding year, we're doing it in the fiscal year. So it's getting tighter, and so you'll see that, get that gap closing a lot more as we go further in future years.
Thank you. And then our smallest category is that red representation on the screen. It's the other charges and expenses, and as highlighted earlier, this consists of things such as postage, miscellaneous items such as unemployment insurance. I know we talked about printing, printer maintenance contract. There's a slight increase of, compared to year-over-year, of an $8,000, $800 difference. And I did not, just to full disclosure, did not drill down based off of that dollar amount. When we get into some of the later charts, I'm doing a high-level analysis over anything that had a 20% change and more than a $20,000 change, so negative, positive, what have you, wanting to be able to break those down for the school committee just to break down the analysis, basically, of what has changed quarter over quarter. Next slide, please. Okay, so this slide is a representation of our Q1 2025 versus Q1 2024, broken down by what our accounting software is deeming a location. So for instance, our system-wide section at the 18.8% of the pie chart consists of salaries, utilities, special services, building repairs, improvements that are district-wide. We also have central admin for its namesake, which is salaries, travel, printer maintenance, et cetera. We also have one of our largest categories, which just talked about the system-wide category. The changes that are driving this system-wide category are very similar to our increases we've had in purchase of services, because as we're breaking down the population, they're fitting into a location bucket, and they're also fitting into that expense category bucket. We're just separating out, but we're seeing fluctuations across both of those because it's the same vendor or same type of activity. So in the purchase of services category, the difference of the 324, there's a $324,857 increase compared to last year, and that, once again, is Lucini invoices that were paid in Q1 in fiscal year '25 versus in Q2 of fiscal year '24. So just explaining some of the large drivers of the fluctuations that we're seeing in the different categories within the slide.
And a quick example of something that might be system-wide, it looks as though we're spending more system-wide, 5% more than we did last year, and, you know, a natural question is, is that coming from schools? What's happening? That is just, again, us being much more consistent with the accounting and the lines that are being used and using the DESI chart of accounts. And just one quick example, there could be a software that's being universally used across all the schools, we would put that in system-wide, just to make sure it's in the appropriate bucket or line. So it's just moving things to where they belong appropriately. Again, as that is consistently done year after year, you're going to see that more, a, a much smaller gap in that. But there was no significant increase in spending, for example. It's just putting things where they belong most appropriately with the new chart of accounts.
Exactly. And then just highlighting some of the differences, Blanche Ames is a negative 4.21% difference compared to the same time period last year. Central Admin is a 6.22% increase over last year. Easton Middle School is a negative 1.86% decrease compared to the same time period last year. Oliver Ames is a 1.04% increase compared to the same time last year. Richardson Olmsted is a negative 3.33%, and the largest driver is that system-wide change of a 49.38% change because of the aggregation of the Lucini invoices in Q1 payment of this fiscal year versus Q2 of last fiscal year. I just wanted to highlight some of those major drivers of why we're seeing fluctuations. Next slide, please. Thank you. Now, I've been including a student enrollment distribution slide in these presentations. The data before you is as of October 1st of 2024 on the left-hand side and as of October 1st of 2023 on the right-hand side. We are including that just to see how our enrollment figures are changing over time. It's a visual representation just to compare this slide to the previous slide, between the separation between the schools and are we allocating dollars in a way that aligns with our enrollment? And for the most part, I would say we are, based off of the changes that we are seeing in enrollment and looking at the year-over-year differences. I see that there are some slight changes happening, depending on what category, what school we're looking at, but for the most part, the expenses are being evenly distributed based off of how our enrollment numbers are shaping up between the different, four different school locations. We just wanted to remind the public and school committee that we compile our budget requests and funding based on the needs of each school. The budget itself is not compiled on a one-size-fits-all-per-pupil-cost basis, so we do keep that in consideration within our budget setting process. Next slide, please. Thank you. And then I've been including this just as our summary. It's a progress dial as a metric to represent where we are as of each time period we are presenting quarterly. For 9/30 of 2024, we are at 10.5% spend down of our total budget, which, as I said, it's tracking very similarly to where we were in prior fiscal year. At Q1 2024, we were also at a 10.5% spend-down rate. And just reminding that, as Dr. Gruball highlighted, our fiscal year spending is cyclical in nature. For each quarter, the amount the district spends may vary. An example would be our utility expenses increasing during the winter months. You will see fluctuations depending on what time of year it is. And just one of the items I wanted to highlight, trying to summarize with some Horizon items and things we're on the lookout for. We are aware, I believe, beginning of October, as far as potential out-of-district cost increase for special services for next fiscal year. The maximum rate factor that was recommended to be applied per the Operational Services Division of Massachusetts for special education tuition is 3.42% for fiscal year '26. That's a slight decrease compared to fiscal year '25, which was a 4.69%.
And the year before, which was 14%.
Exactly.
But it is compounded on those percentages, yes.
And that's over 20 for three years.
Correct, yes. So we're just keeping that in mind as we go into budget setting for this next year. We are looking carefully at everything, and we'll keep you apprised of all the different changes as we know of what is taking place. And then just a Horizon item for us as a district, I will be bringing forward the budget adjustment transfer policy, because I do want to get that put into place as soon as possible, just to make sure we're on target and we have internal control set for that. So I will be bringing that to you in a future school committee meeting for your second reading, just an update there.
And again, a small in comparison to the entirety of the budget, but it is the beginning of what I think is going to be more. The OSD does give permission to, out-of-district placements to increase their tuition. We already received our first letter of that. I would anticipate there are going to be more, especially when they received the percentage increase that Andrea just talked about.
So I think that that is it for my presentation. I wanted to stop to see if you wanted to look at the reports in more detail and maybe walk through some of them for the setup or structure of them?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay. So I think the most detailed report of them all is the Okay, so I think the most detailed report of them all is the, the school budget.
Yeah, unless you want to.
If there's any questions.
I don't know, do you have a version that you want to pull up of this or?
I can pull up an email if it's helpful to actually walk through. Oh, it should, yes.
Yes, it is in the pack. Thank you, Chrissy.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yeah, just so that anybody from the public watching would be able to see what we're talking about. Oh, go ahead, ask a question aloud because it's good, it's a good public question.
I believe Operational Services Division. I had to look that up myself when I was putting my notes together.
Thank you, good question, Marvel.
Yes, Operational Service Division of Massachusetts. Yep, and the rates they apply are for like social services. So special services falls under that for the max increase that we can, that third parties can charge for tuition next year for special education.
I'm just going to grab my notebook because I had some feedback.
Yes, yeah, you might have to make the, a smidge larger, thank you, okay. Yes, so I guess just to highlight how this PDF or the chart is set up. On the far left-hand side is our four-digit DESI, which is Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Prescribed Codes for Reporting. So the far-left-hand side has the actual title. So for example, that very first line of the code is 1110 is school committee. But that encompasses, it could encompass salaries, it could encompass materials and supplies, other charges and services, contract services, but everything rolls up into that one code. So this is just very high level, everything that is coded to that four-digit code from a DESI chart of accounts perspective. Then as you move further in the chart, we start with our fiscal year 25 budget. Our very first column is our adopted budget. So that is what was adopted by the school committee for fiscal year 25 by each of the DESI codes. We then move on to where we at as of 9:30 of 2024 for our Q1 year-to-date expenditures. And then we have a snapshot of where we tracking, how much have we spent so far out of the total adopted budget. So for that very first line for school committee, we've spent 10.2% out of the total budget that's been adopted. And then as we move to the right in the chart for fiscal year 24 budget, we have the adopted budget listed. And then we have what the quarter-to-date expenditures were as of 9:30 of 2023 and what percentage were we at at that point in time. So I'm just trying to do a cross comparison to understand, are we on track compared to last year? Is there any anomaly we want to call out? Are things, one, are they being coded correctly? Are we, you know, tracking things accurately? Does it make sense for the activities of Eastern Public Schools that we are at that particular percentage as of this point in time in the year? As we go to the very far-right-hand side of this, I have a dollar amount difference. So that 1408 is taking the Q1, or the Q2, sorry, Q1 of 2025 expenditures of $12,496 and it's subtracting the Q1 of 2024, the year-to-date expenditures of $11,088 to arrive at the 1408. And the difference is being calculated, it's taking the 1408 and it's dividing it over the $11,088 to say, if we take the difference between where we're at as of this year and compare it over what we spent last year, what is the percentage change just on a quarter-to-date basis? So that's a 12.7% difference. There are ebbs and flows, there are negative amounts in here. And basically, I, if there's anything that you want to evaluate individually, I have explanations for items that are anything over $20,000 and more than a 20% change. If there's anything that we want to evaluate. There's just one example that I know stands out to me because it has a negative 100% difference and a $40,000 difference for line 1430 Legal Services. We have received invoices from one of our legal firms. We are, we have a timing difference. We've received invoices for exactly $40,000 and those are in process in a warrant packet. So you'll see that come through in Q2. And that'll be a fluctuation once again from a timing perspective compared to the same time last year. So like I said, a lot of the differences are timing differences throughout. But this is everything that DESI is asking us as far as a codification perspective and then just putting it in a format that shows the changes that are happening from this time period in 2024 compared to the time, same time period in 2023.
And again, just to explain any differences that you may have seen from, again, a timing perspective. The budget book, for example, this year has a very different budget setup. It has different cost centers. That was prior to the directive from the school committee when we were working on how do you want this represented in the budget book and to the school committee, for example, at quarterly reviews. So we put it in as the school and district cost centers. Then, of course, the school committee directed that it be lined up with the DESI chart of accounts, which we very much appreciate because that's how we're reporting it to the state and it keeps us from, from creating multiple variations of the same budget. And so now that's what you have here. This is also on the district website. It's not in the printed budget book because that was done at a specific time, but it is on the district website under the FY 25 budget. And also some of the variations you may see, depending on which line it is, maybe the, changing the chart of accounts from 2022 is actually not just renaming lines. It's a complicated process. It involves everybody in the district that creates POs or purchases anything. And so the first step is actually changing the line items. But then it's also calibrating what goes in each of the buckets. And I've given you examples of this before, but for the benefit of public who may not have heard such an explanation before. For example, certain software, whether it was under a instructional materials line or whether it's under a technology line, that goes by the chart of accounts as described by DESI. But there is also, there are some times where we have read through them together and with the people that are ordering materials and we have a hard time determining which is which. Districts may actually do that differently. So sometimes even doing a cross comparison of district to district might be different. The key is for us to get it calibrated to make sure that each of the principals, each of the department chairs, anybody that orders anything, that we have it all calibrated, we're doing it the same way so that our data longitudinally is accurate and everything is in the right cost centers. So that's a huge process. And as you know, for, over the last two years, we've been teaching all of those, all of those staff members how to do their budget, how to change their cost centers, how to order out of the correct lines, how to then determine what they need in each line. So it's a little more complicated than just changing a line item. But this chart of accounts with the DESI indicators that you want for your quarterly updates that you, that we present to the state is also on the website for the public to check at any time if they can't see this or if they just want to reference it at another time. So things like, sorry, things like superintendent line I saw, for example, says $425,000. Obviously, that has a big description to it per DESI. It is not a salary, for example, it's the office. So it may have things like mandates that we have, like if we go out to bid, we have to publish in a newspaper or we have to publish somewhere. That goes in the office of the superintendent. So there are different things that DESI requires us to put under it. It's not obvious when you just look at superintendent or school committee. Clearly, you don't have salaries, so what could that be for? Well, there's postage, if there's ever anything that needs to be sent out from the school committee or the MCAS scores every year or things like that that are mandated that have to be put in a bucket. So we analyze what DESI wants us to put in each of those line items and that's where we put them. So we're cleaning those up and that's why it might look like there are additions or subtractions or maybe there are additions and subtractions for a reason and that's what we can explain to you as well. Lauren?
Yes, go ahead. I think I lined this up correctly. So the line that is library materials and equipment?
Yes.
Is it accurate that it's a 13,182% difference?
Yes.
That's exactly an example of what we were talking about.
That's a great question.
That's a good example, thank you.
This same time last year, only $96 was spent in that account. And then so this time this year, $12,771 was spent. So when taking the 90, sorry, the difference between the two, the $12,675, oh, yeah, but that's a great question. I have a formula in there for divisional errors, so I will recheck my formula because it's basically taking the $12,675 and dividing it over the $96, which would not equal that. So yes, that looks like an error, thank you for calling that out.
When you said library, though, that, that triggered an example for me because we had an extensive conversation about library books. Does that go under library materials or does that go under textbooks or books? So we just, we can make that decision. We just have to make sure it's consistent across the district, that one library isn't doing it one way and another library just another way. So that's the calibration we were talking about. I thought that's what you were pointing out.
I did too when she worked on that.
So I have a couple of specific questions, but before I dive in, any committee members have any? Jackie?
What about the line for substitutes?
I'm sorry, Jackie, can you say the line number, the account number?
Yeah, it's 2325.
Yes.
Okay, yes, so when evaluating this, I do realize based off of how we're set up, we still have some cleanup to do. There are purchases of services contracts tied to the DESI subcode within that line item that relate to, I'm going to call them technology purchases, like notable vector. So in my opinion, I don't think that's where this should be classified as far as a DESI codification goes. But that's included currently.
Can I just explain, that software is what we use for, to hire substitutes? So it's connected to substitutes.
Yeah.
But we need to determine, does it go on, it doesn't seem like it would go under instructional technology. So ultimately, does, is that something that's going to show an increase in the superintendent line? Because we put it in the office of the superintendent, then people say, wait a minute, why did that go up this amount? So those are the kinds of things that we're cleaning up exactly. That's not, it says substitutes, but we're not talking about physical teacher substitutes.
So there's no physical teacher substitutes in this line right now? There is, so it's this plus the software? I mean, it's that plus the software.
It's only the software based off of me drilling down into the expenses that are hitting this account. There's not personnel hitting that particular.
Oh, because this is the, where's the substitute personnel line?
I don't think, I will double-check, I don't think.
That's about what we send for, spend for substitutes in addition to the program, so it could be that line.
And then I also was wondering about the curriculum director. Is that person, all personnel in there, is that multi?
Um, let me see, that is.
That's, um, let me see, hold on that.
211.
So I think that if I remember correctly, that line, that bucket has a lot of instructional materials in it along with the curriculum director.
And then let me see.
Because if you, if you look at this, if you essentially clicked on it, it would expand, not click on it, but like each of these would expand to more lines of various items that fall.
Oh, okay, okay.
These are like the overall big buckets.
Okay. Yeah, so that, because that would be interesting to see, I'd be definitely interested to see what's in these categories.
Right, the, the.
The chart of accounts?
The packets.
I think this is on the DESI, this is live on the DESI site, so you can actually go through the DESI site and click through.
Yes, there is, so there is, there's a, it's a chart of, it literally is a chart. It will say the account number, it will say the name of it, like substitutes, and it will list all the expenses that go in that.
Okay.
It is on the DESI website, but we can get copies of it as well.
I mean, there, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I did want to mention to go back, I am just confirming what Dr. Gubal said about the substitute line. There is personnel costs in that line that are also attributed to the 2325 line.
And what about insurance programs, that's 5,200?
Yes, so that, I've confirmed, that is for our MIA, Unemployment Services Program. One of the things when reviewing the expenses of what we budgeted versus what's been expensed so far this year, we are seeing an increase in allowable claims. When speaking with our Director of Human Resources, De Napoli, there have been different positions that the Department of Unemployment has taken a firm stance on that are actually eligible for unemployment that were not previously eligible for unemployment. So we may need to recommend a budget transfer at some point this year to fund additional dollars to that account based off the claims that are being allowed by the state.
Oh, okay. And then I won't, I mean, I have, I won't keep asking a million questions, but the tuition to non-public schools, are those the private out-of-district?
Yes.
Okay.
Please ask us any questions you have.
Yeah.
Jackie, if you want, you can just Google MA DESI chart of accounts, it's right here. I pull it up, but this, this computer doesn't support Word documents, but it is a Word.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I think that, I mean, I think that's it for me, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nancy, your last.
So some of the questions I had were answered. I do have one question, are our bills, like things that have been late, is everything up to date at this moment?
I believe so.
For the most part?
Yes, we.
You know, we're in 30 days, we're not getting letters, we're up to date?
Yes, so we had some catch-up with fiscal year 24 closeout, which I completely own that that is a more delinquent process than what I would like to have going forward. We are completely staffed up in the business office. We have a new APAR clerk who's been awesome, very proactive in even reaching out to departments to confirm, hey, there's a purchase order out there. Did you get an invoice? So basically being very, like I said, being very proactive about process versus us having to catch up at the end of the fiscal year and then figure out, well, we have these 10 invoices. What is going on with these, like in following up status with the vendors directly, but actually reaching out and coordinating with our departments in advance and developing a better process so we're more timely with everything related to the accounts payable process. But yes, we have been delinquent in various areas.
It was, and that's, and there's another reason for that. Well, before I get to the other reason too, the, the position, we did add a position. We didn't add a position, we had a position that we tried not to fill and we ended up having to fill it. Because with the way that we are doing our processes and procedures now, we've taught everyone. We did a whole year practicing it. We're into, we went through the whole summer. Now we're telling people we're sending it back if, for example, the PO wasn't approved before the invoice comes in or the PO and the invoice have different amounts on them. You know, basic accounting principles that just weren't able to be followed up in the past. That was holding up a lot of POs. Now that we've gotten this tightened up, we are going to have employees here and there who make errors as they're learning the process. But as things go back to them, they send it back the correct way, they don't tend to keep doing it over and over again. So we're seeing less and less of that as we go along. But it's all part of the learning process. But again, it's a positive thing because it's a learning process that we're getting tighter about how we're doing our procedures.
Thank you. Did I, you may have said this, are our numbers now lined up with DESI or you're still in that process?
There's still cleanup to be had. There are some accounts, as we find them, to be able to change them, but there are some more sweeping changes that need to be made to align everything perfectly with DESI.
Yeah, mostly it's our calibration in the district. Because we're still, there are still some staff members that we're teaching how to do this distributed model of doing their, their own budgets. And they are learning them. We, but we did the central office first and then we did the principals and then we did department chairs. So there are some people that have had longer amount of experience than others, just as part of the learning process. But we're definitely getting there. It, it's a lot better than it was even four or five years ago, a lot better.
And I just have one more question. The amount from the state, the per pupil amount went up this year. Is that money just funded into like everywhere or is it a specific thing, a specific number?
I believe that's part of our Chapter 70 funding that will come directly to the town and the town's responsible for allocating it. I don't, I'm not familiar enough with the process to know what would happen with those additional funds.
So we don't actually get that money directly? That, we get Chapter 70 money. We get Chapter 70 money through, or the town gets Chapter 70 money that we get in our budget. So we've already, we asked for our budget. So the money that the town gets for that, that gets funneled through. We, it's not like, if they give us, it went from $60 to $104 per student. We didn't get $44 per stu, we didn't get a check from the state for $44 per student. That, that's not how it works. We have our budget, our budget that was approved at the Maytown meeting. That's how it's set up. That money was already in when it came to us. So it's based on how much we ask the town for every year. We don't get like cut an extra check and so now we have extra cash that we can use for something that needs to go into a specific line. Our budget was already in lines when it went to the town for a vote and it was voted, and that's how it was voted. Does that make sense?
Yep, thank you.
I have a couple of small questions. What is, so line 2345, what is our $650 in distance learning?
2345?
Just in case.
Yeah. 2345?
I'm just going to pull this up, it's easier for me just to click into a pivot table. Okay. So, just going to go and see. And then I may have to go into our budget sheets because I see the 650 that's budgeted, it's budget appropriation, and it looks like we had the same exact dollar amount budgeted last year.
But it wasn't spent last year, so there wouldn't be any POs in there.
Yeah.
It may be a holdover from Virtual High School, for example, something like that where we took it out of. We may be taking it from somewhere else and when that line goes over, we'll just use that money for it. Those are, those are the examples. We start with the highest numbers and those are examples that as we go through clean things up, that's exactly what we're talking about where we would move it.
Yep. And then, so it looks like, so professional development leadership, looks like we had budgeted $9,000 last year and that was zeroed out for this year. Did that, what was the 9,000? I guess what was spent in that category last year?
$2,000 was, $2,000 was spent.
And then can you throw, just to give me the.
Yes, 2351.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so let's see. So it looks like as far as vendors, new teacher orientation, first day for staff breakfast, and it's like article copyright for management conference, so some of our management conference fees that we're going to there, so some PD related and then the new teacher orientation.
Okay, so were those just moved in, folded into the bigger PD budget for this year?
Exactly. Or I don't know if that was the exact line, but what we did was go through the DESI descriptors and put it where it was more appropriate. Exactly.
Okay, all right. So I will more formally share feedback via emails that you have the documentation, but I just did want to hit a couple of the things that were covered when we were at the joint conference last week. I was able to attend several budget, several, several presentations that touched on budget. Let me see, so. See, so we had, there was a group there from Masbo, which is, so the State Association of School Budget Officials and, yes, the national and the states, they, it was interesting. So they have, it's apparently a meritorious budget award that, that some districts set as a goal. It's, it's quite different than the GFOA distinguished budget award that the town works towards. We talked a little bit about that difference. And one of the, one of the items that they mentioned was that the GFOA is more reflective of audit-driven standards and then where the ASBO is, is meant to really be more geared towards school budget. So it does have the model.
They are very different.
Yes, hugely different, yeah. And so some of the towns, I asked how, you know, they were representatives there who have worked, who have gotten that award from, there were three different districts. And I asked if they were familiar with the distinguished budget award and they said one of them, at least one of them, maybe, maybe all of them, had town or administrators or city councils that, that did have the GFOA format. So they said what, what, what they found in practice, for example, was that the municipality's budget book has a couple of pages on the school budget. And then they have their own standalone school budget book. And it's, they have, it's like eight years of data. It's, they basically emphasize that it's, there's a reason only three districts in the state have this award. Yeah, yeah, so it was just, it was just an interesting.
Definitely.
Interesting to think about, but they emphasize that, you know, it takes many, many years to get there, et cetera, so it's not something that, you know, I'm not going to come before you and say, yes, we have to do this, right? Because there may not be value, right, in the amount of work it takes to get there, right? We can decide amongst ourselves, I think. But I always think it's good to, you know, look at a, if there's a standard or best practice.
We'll definitely look at it, yeah.
Yeah, so it was, so that was interesting. We talked, they talked a lot about the pain of the DESI reclassifications and that especially where there, this format has such a long look back. It's basically three prior years, your, your current, your projected, and then it's a three-year projection out. So there was a lot of good discussion about, you know, in practice, what, how do you do your projections? So if you have your contracts, you can project.
Right.
You know, kind of put it, it's a lot of placeholders for the projection side of it. And then the reclassifications, they talked about how, you know, in practice, they've had to, for example, just note that as, as part of the narrative content without redoing all of the math. So that, anyway, so.
Right, that's why people will have questions. They'll try to just look at the math from year to year and they'll see that there are differences and without the context, it's difficult to understand why, things like that.
Yep, absolutely. Another session that touched on budget was on collaboration between school and town government. So that was more along the lines of some of the, like, there were some echoes of what we're doing with the PACE project. There have been some other, other municipalities who have.
Done something similar.
Worked on sustainable, yeah, long-term sustainable budgeting and collaboration. But we did, again, kind of touch on how the school budget is accounted for and presented in the town budget, the collaboration or lack thereof sometimes between town and school officials with budget processes.
More often is not, we're very fortunate, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, one of the districts is, that presented was a city and they basically vote and the school committee independently votes on their budget. And they just basically send it to the city, say this is what we want. So very different process than doing it through a town meeting where you need to come up with a zero, yeah, you need to come up with a budget that's balanced. And we talked a bit about, there's one district that has a practice of having at their fall special town meeting, they have a warrant article that appropriates a transfer of their Medicaid reimbursement from the town into a revolving account, a sped revolving account for the district.
We just talked about that today.
Yeah, let's do that.
Well, we can't just do that, but I appreciate that. I appreciate the support. We definitely will be engaging in the conversation.
Yes, yeah, yeah, there are practices that we could look to.
I was talking to a couple of colleagues today about just that.
Yeah, yep. Yep, so it was their Medicaid reimbursements and, and I think, I think they may have transferred over something else that maybe.
Vento.
Yes, that would get appropriated. And they felt, you know, they, they felt that it just made for tracking and transparency. And talked about the DLS gateway as a, as a good comparative budget tool at the town level. And then finally, I think Lauren, you and I were at the what should be in your school budget document, right, together? And again, I'm hoping that they, yeah, it was a budget Q and A. I'm hoping that they just put the presentations online, I can just send you the links to the presentations.
Thank you.
But, you know, it just talked about, again, a lot of practices that, that we do already, you know, the importance of having a budget calendar that gets adjusted for reality, avoiding surprises, using cost centers, the fact that it's not explicitly defined, like every, every district gets to approve their own, but they thought, you know, emphasized that starting with the DESI chart of account can be a good, a good starting point. Quarterly budget updates is the best practice. And then they just had some suggestions for some of like, for the budget, you know, budget actual, and then also including projections for the rest of the year, really emphasized that. And I think they had maybe a particular school district in mind that had had some financial trouble due to lack of the ability to make projections, so.
Not Easton.
Yes, not Easton, no. And we talked about the quarterly transfer, or a transfer process and having a policy for that. And then I'll also send along, there was, I know I had, I had shared with you, Dr. Cabral, the note about approving grants. So that was interesting, they pulled up.
It was.
It's, it's.
Were you able to find out if it was entitlements or otherwise?
Yes, so it is, it's everything.
Okay.
And I think where it gets, where it was not something that was top of mind for everybody is that it really is tying back to some MGL language on all, basically all monies are expended by the school committee. So in practice, the recommendation was that when you go and, you know, finalize or adopt your budget, you'll have projections for entitlement grants. And then when you know the final amounts, you know, say over the summer, or I think in practice, one superintendent mentioned at their first quarterly budget meeting, they just note for the record the actual amounts that were, that are expected to be received or awarded for those grants for the year. And it just becomes an item that the committee approves.
Right.
So, yeah.
So fortunately, you did approve the ones that we did know at the time.
Yep.
When we presented the budget.
Yep.
And we absolutely can update you on any we've gotten since then. Those also are on the DESI website too, just so that you know.
Yes.
You shouldn't have to look for them, we'll provide them, but anytime if you want to check or double check, you, you can do that.
Yep, yep. And then, and then our practice of, you know, some of the, sometimes when we're approving something as a gift and it's actually a grant, that process works fine. So as stuff, as we win grants throughout the year.
As long as you don't not vote for any of them.
Exactly, yes, yes. And they brought that up, right, yeah. So they, they mentioned, there was a district or somebody in the audience who mentioned that they had, the district had inadvertently accepted a grant that I think had strings attached that they could do abstinence-only sex education. Yeah, that the school committee did not approve. Sent that right back, so, yeah. Yeah, so, and that, and that is why school committees approve grants.
Yeah, I just, which all makes sense and we have been doing that except for entitlements. It did surprise me that it, it does.
It surprised me it's entitlements, but that's totally fine.
Yeah, and it, it seemed to surprise everybody in the room, I think was.
There was one student that the school committee approves every single donation that they receive on a building level.
Oh, yes.
Tissues and wipes kind of thing? Okay.
No, they said not tissues, they, they.
I think he, I think he, yeah, I think he said not tissues.
It's a very common one, that's why we all talk about it, right?
Yeah, like putting in.
Combs or something for Halloween decorations.
Yeah, yeah, so even, so donations in kind, putting and, you know, putting, estimating a dollar value of in-kind donations and having. And that didn't seem to have unanimous agreement in the room that that is a valid interpretation of approving gifts and grants.
It's entirely up to you.
Yes, so we can, yeah, we can, we can certainly noodle on that, but I think we have other things that are more of a priority, so. But anyway, yes.
That's very validating, I appreciate you sharing all that and also appreciate you attending. They're really valuable and we, of course, encourage you to attend when you can, but we know that you work and have lives, so the fact that you go, which all three of you did, is very much appreciated by us. It allows us to have conversations while we're there too, with you. And, you know, it's, it's important that, it's also helpful to us that we can all attend different workshops and kind of divide and conquer. And some are tailored to school committee members, some are tailored to superintendents, and so that joint conference has a lot of value and we appreciate you recognizing the value of it. Thank you.
We definitely learned a lot. I think, we'll, we'll talk about this separately, but I'm thinking maybe we can each do like a quick one-page on the, on each workshop that we attended and presented the next meeting while it's kind of fresh in our minds, that way we can share out some of the highlights. So, yeah, anyway, so it was, it was good. There were, there were a lot of, a lot of budget presentations available. It's obviously a very hot topic and a big responsibility for school committee. So I think, you know, sitting through these, it felt good to know that we've, we've nailed the basics and, you know, I think anything kind of from here on out is really just like kind of fine tuning practices or elevating to award-winning best practices. And I like all the awards.
Happy to.
High expectations.
Right, right. So, all right, so anything else, Jackie? Anything further from you? Okay. Nancy, Lauren? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Andrea.
Oh, of course, yeah.
So I appreciate, I, how, how the budget is, is so complex, but the way that you simplify the, the presentation and explain everything and give definitions, I think is so valuable and I really appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, good job.
Marvel, did you have any questions about?
It was very, very amazing. Understood everywhere.
Always ask questions, it piques your curiosity.
Yes, please.
Okay, so quick time check, you have not been notified that you need to leave right now?
If we could move that.
Executive session now?
Yes.
Okay, can we do that now?
Unless you feel as though you need me for the policies, but I think between the three subcommittee members, they.
Yep.
You have that covered?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so then I am going to make a motion to move item 16 up before item 6. So, well, hold on, actually, let me just check. Marvel, are you on?
Oh, we could do the student.
An abbreviated timeline tonight, like, if we were to do your update, would you want to go or were you planning to stick around for policy discussion?
We can do the student. I mean, I can also go online after you guys are done.
Okay.
With executive session, like I can leave and then go online.
Okay, so why don't we have you do your, all right, so have you do your, your update now?
Gotcha.
And that way, yeah, you can.
It'll be quick anyways.
Free to go and then just listen in on policy.
Take your time, don't rush.
Yeah.
Okay, it's a quick one. So I only have RO EMS in a way today. If we go from younger to older, RO, a lot of the students, when they were meeting with the advisory board representative, they were talking, which is Leah, they talked, they were talking a lot about how they enjoyed like the student-to-teacher relationships they were building. And I just thought that was really like something that should be emphasized. And I personally, like, I remember when I was back in RO and I was the same thing and I just think that that consistency is just beautiful and I really think that, you know, teachers should be committed on that. The only thing that we also talked about when we met with Ms. Lewis was that the fifth graders wanted an earlier lunch. And I didn't know this, but they have their lunch at 1:10, which is pretty late. But Mr. Aries and the rest of administration was talking about how they get like snack times and they're working on making sure that like, it's like a universal standard throughout the fifth grade, that every person has a snack and making sure there's accessibility for those who can't get snacks or don't have snacks from home. So that's just something that was kind of, you know, like conflict resolution, which was great. And then when we go to EMS, if you recall, there were some things. things, there were some miscommunications between student and administration, whether that was kind of, whether that was kind of, so there was just.
Was that grade eight?
Yes, it was specifically grade eight, but there were some things with grade seven that were also kind of like discontinuous between the students and the faculty and administration. But as of right now, the administration, when they were talking with Brendan, who is the member from the advisory board at OA, I mean, they were talking to him, he was saying how, they were saying how they make the survey and how they're going to try to get more student voice, whether that was that they make their own little advisory board, or they're exploring more routes to kind of solve that problem, like the miscommunications. And we also, again, thanks to Brendan, you know, shout out to Brendan Dolan, that he was saying how, like, they're, they're, they also want more diverse voices, because even if you recognize at the OA level, we were talking with this cabinet about it, and she's trying to mix it up, which I'll talk about in a minute, even when you look in like all of these grades, they're, they usually take those who are in lots of extracurriculars, or they speak to those in higher class levels, whereas in those like new students, or maybe those people that are like, you know, a little shy, or, you know, less like out there, they don't get their, they don't get recognized as often. So they're making sure to get like a diverse population with EMS. And then if you go to OA, Ms. Kavanaugh is making like an H block advisory group. And in that H block advisory group, she actually sent out an email this week. That was, it was a quick email with H block like surveys and like just speaking of the, in general. And then people who are interested in the advisory group, I don't necessarily know how she's gathering that, but she definitely was talking about how she's going to get as diverse as possible. And I'll get into detail on that when I have more information. And then OA for sports, you know, we're doing great so far. Girl soccer put up an amazing fight. They just recently lost, but they did great throughout the season. And then boys soccer is either going on now or just finished, something along those lines for Elite Eight. Volleyball is going to the state championship game. And then cross country is also. So they're doing great. They're doing amazing. And yeah, if you guys have any questions, I'll be the answer. And then also, if you want us to focus on some more things, we were talking with Ms. Loomis, we definitely are going to be looking more into the, like, the EMS situations and like how that's kind of being resolved throughout the rest of the year. And then we are also going to do the same for OA. And we also started talking about the complications of like student slash parent square, more on the student side, because we kind of, a lot of students have been talking about how like for MyFlex Learning, for instance, we got this like very detailed, like, you know, like how you, like, we had a whole 29-minute block on like videos and discussions with your advisor teacher about how to navigate MyFlex Learning, how to like do all these things for H block, whereas in Student Square, it was kind of, you know, like throwing out the students where it was like, hey, like download the app. And there wasn't much like direction about that. So we are gonna talk to Ms. Kavanaugh about that and then explore any options regarding that as well. But if there is anything you guys want the advisory board to focus on, I'd be happy to relay the message.
Great. Any questions or feedback?
So much.
Student Square is just in high school.
Okay.
Yes.
So getting a tutorial, getting some education on how to use that.
For sure. There are also some concerns about like, for instance, Franklin had given the example where it's like the student handbook, and I was just looking at this myself, like the student handbook is like all the way at the bottom of all these messages. So it's like, if there's a way to like filter them, or even just like an easier way to like make sure that all of the things that need emphasis are getting emphasis on the communication, like of student handbook in particular, because like, sure, you have like emails, but not a lot of students check their emails. So if you have Student Square, it'd be best if we're using any ways to, you know, make sure that we're prioritizing the things that need to be prioritized. Because like as of right now, there are a lot of announcements, and obviously they're like useful announcements, like, you know, like athletics and all of that stuff, like all of the students want to hear about that. But at the same time, if, you know, things like the student handbook are getting lost in translation, that's also a little troubling.
That's interesting. Like, is it searchable?
Yeah.
It may be a feature that's already there that we just, I personally do not know about. So we can have Mrs. Ramus do a tutorial on that. That's great feedback. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you mind if I highlighted something out of the assistant superintendent notes?
Yes, sure.
Since Marvel is here. So one of our last meetings, we talked about a professional development day, you know, that was coming up, and Marvel actually suggested if there was any opportunities for students to be a part of that day. And at our last professional development day, we had 10 students from OA, including Marvel.
Wow.
Run by Sonia Warwick, who presented Beyond the Stereotype to, they did two sessions to our staff. The, the reviews on their session were phenomenal. And in fact, I had an elementary teacher approach me afterwards suggesting that they actually share their presentation with other districts, because it was so impactful, really learning about, about just, well, I'll let Marvel talk about it, actually, if you want to just talk about.
It was.
The session that you, that you and your, and your classmates ran.
It was very, personally, it was informative to myself. But like, there was, Sonia did an amazing job, and all of the others did great, too. It was pretty much like, there was a lot of, like, there's like the status section, and there was also like defining like the difference between race, ethnicity, and culture, and giving examples about that. And then there were also like discussion questions in between, which I thought was, you know, really interesting, because not only did I get to hear like the teacher's side, but like you'll see teachers from like the math department at OA, talking to teachers to like the English department, like RO or any other school. And I just thought that was really great, because like, you know, obviously, like, these teachers don't get that much time to like talk to each other, especially from different schools or even different departments. So that was really cool. And, yeah, like a lot of, I really liked, there was a discussion about data. And I got, like, I went to the math department first, and you have this totally different discussion about data from the math department, and then you go to the English department and the history department, and it's like these crazy discussions. It was really, really profound. I was pretty amazed. And then at the end, we kind of just got like a quick little rundown of like different, like other presentations. So like I did a little one about Middle East, and then, you know, there was also like BIPOC community, there was also like AAPI, and I'm probably missing one right now. But, yeah, it was great. I truly did love it. It was a great experience for the students, and I'm hoping that I can say.
Yeah. And, and again, it was, it's really because of Marvel's discussion and her ideas. It's just really a testament to how important the student representative on the school committee is, and especially under Marvel's leadership, has been absolutely fantastic. So.
Team effort, I promise.
Ms. Perez, can you talk about the upcoming presentation?
Sure.
Just so they know about it.
Sonia and the group have been on a speaking tour. So they spoke to the four degrees at the high school. They did two professional development sessions for our adults, and they will be running a session for our first DEIA community meeting for the community.
First one this year?
Yes. So that is November 25. It was going to be in the BA small cafeteria, but I just sent an email that I need to discuss with Dr. Cabral about a bigger location, because we have 60 RSVPs. So, and that's just the folks who RSVPed and not those that are going to show up without it. So Sonia has been working on this.
Give that date again, please.
November 25 at 6:00 PM.
Location TBD.
Location TBD. But Sonia's been doing this since last year, and will continue to do it throughout the school year. And we're hoping that she and the group can leave some sort of legacy, as I think all of you are seniors.
Yeah.
So hoping that we can recreate this every year. But this is just what happens when you have a community in a school department that really gives students voice and choice.
Thank you. So great. I love hearing about how the advisory committee is really becoming an agent of collaboration and communication and change for the students and staff within each of the school buildings. You know, it's not just, you know, go visit and have a chit-chat, right? It's, you know, like really listening to the students and helping them to communicate their concerns or, or, you know, or what's going well, right, to administration. I think that feedback is, is, is super important. And to have a, you know, kind of a mechanism to help move things forward is, is just, I couldn't be happier with how the role of the committee is, is evolving. So thank you for all the work that you're doing. It's very exciting.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that excellent update. All right. So, next up, so I'll make a motion to move item 16 up before item seven. So can I get a second on that motion, and then I'll go launch into the whole executive session thing. Roll call, vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wasman, yes.
Star, yes?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So I move to go into executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A subsection 21a3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for Eastern Educators Association, and pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A subsection 21a2, to conduct strategy session in preparation for collective bargaining with the Eastern Educators Association. And in my opinion, having this discussion in open session would be detrimental to the bargaining position of the school committee. Can I get a second?
DeLuca, second.
Roll call, vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wasman, yes.
Star, yes?
Miss.
Okay.
Now I can see you.
All right, great. All right, well, welcome back, everybody. We are continuing with our next item on the agenda, which is the schedule of payments. So since the school committee last met, we have approved two warrants for routine operational expenses, so 020S and 022S, and then there are two that are in process, 023S and 024S. Okay. Next up on the agenda is a discussion and possible vote for assigning parent group liaisons. This is something that I asked to have added to the agenda. I know that we had discussed it, I think at a high level in our goal-setting discussions last year, which we'll come back to that soon as well. But so what I'm hoping to do is to just see and if we can officially name somebody among the committee who's willing to take on responsibility for reaching out to the PAC chairs, PAC/PTA chairs at each of the schools, as well at, yeah, because it's not at OA, as well as the CPAC, the LPAC, and if there is, if there are any others. I know that, I think Kelly has some...
The DEIA advisory committee.
The DEIA, okay, at OA, might be one to reach out to as well. So the goal is for us to open up a channel of communication with the different parent groups to schedule time for a representative to go to their meetings at least once a year, I think would be a good target, maybe more frequently, and to be able to provide updates on kind of, you know, what's happening with the school committee, any key initiatives, and then have it be, you know, of course, a two-way conversation to get feedback from the parent groups around their concerns, priorities, et cetera. So I think not necessarily adding, you know, it's not a subcommittee we can consider whether or not to add it to our matrix of school committee responsibilities. I think it would probably make sense to add it to the list of school committee committees, or, yeah, whatever, whatever that is, yeah, our school committee duties. And so unfortunately, Kelly Perseo is not here, and she is involved. She has students in two of the schools. Lauren is a parent at one of the schools as well. I know that you are both involved with PTAs and PACs already, so if either of you would be interested, I could see that making sense for one of you to volunteer for this responsibility. But I'd want to, you know, open up the conversation, see if Jackie or Nancy would have any interest. So what do you guys think? We can just kind of open discussion?
I would definitely be interested, but I want to give Kelly an opportunity to state her interest as well.
Okay, okay. Jackie or Nancy, any thoughts on just either the idea itself or interest in being involved?
No, I think it's, I think it's a good idea. I just, what day would I do that?
Yeah, yeah. Your dance card's a little full.
Yes.
No, I think it's a good idea, too. I think, you know, kind of down the line, if whoever is doing it, whether it's Lauren or Kelly, wants to stop at some point, I would be interested, but with negotiations and the policy review going on, it doesn't make sense for me to do it right now. But I think with Lauren and Kelly having the kids in the schools, if they're interested, I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
I mean, my kid's in the school, too, but not really.
Okay, so how about, in the interest of keeping this moving forward, because I know, I feel like there are definitely topics that we want to be connecting with the parent groups sort of sooner rather than later. There's a lot going on with town stuff, with the PACE committee. It would be a great opportunity to help educate folks as to what's going on there and the impact that that can have on schools and what to be looking out for. So I would like to not wait another several weeks. So if we're okay, I would like to propose that we assign Lauren to this with the thinking that you will coordinate and collaborate with Kelly, and that, you know, if between the two of you, there's a strong feeling that, you know, she wants to, you know, that this would be something where she could take the lead in responsibility, then you could just come back and inform us of that, and we could just update our little matrix.
Sounds good.
Does that work? Okay, all right. So then I move to, so make a motion to create the role of parent group liaison within the school committee and to assign Lauren initially as the liaison. Can I get a second?
DeLuca's second.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wasman, yes.
Starr, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you. I think that's, it's important.
I agree.
I'm looking forward to seeing how that, how that works out, and thank you for volunteering.
My pleasure.
Okay. All right, next up, policy review. So Mrs. Pruitt, do you want to launch into anything, or just have Nancy or Jackie?
Well, we do have the experts here, but I do know that Jackie and Nancy, along with Carol's Director Perez, have been working tirelessly on updating our policies. So at this point, I turn it over to Jackie and Nancy and Carol's.
Okay. If you, Nancy, Carol's, if you don't mind, I just wanted to say a couple of things before we get started.
Yes, please.
So as Mrs. Pruitt said, we are starting to go through a very voluminous policy manual. We're discussing what policies we think can be combined, what policies need to be updated and sent to legal, what policies maybe don't belong in the policy manual, or what policies are no longer relevant. So two overall changes that we discussed. First, for every policy that's reviewed but not changed, we want to add a notation on the policy that it has been reviewed. So whoever is doing this in the future will see that it's been looked at recently. I did talk to legal, and Ms. Stein had suggested we add a notation saying, "reviewed by the policy subcommittee on whatever date, no changes recommended." And she said that that's not something we need to vote on, so we don't have to bring every single policy in front of you to vote on making this addition, which is great. Second, for any policies that we decide as a committee to delete, for whatever reason, we had talked about putting together a list at the end of the policy manual, stating which policies had been deleted, the date it had been deleted, and the reason. So if things change in the future, that can be a good reference point. So are there any questions about that, either of those points?
No, I think they're both great ideas.
Thoughtful.
Okay, so we can just start going through. Nancy or Carol's, do you want to start? Or do you want me to start, or?
Why don't you?
Carol's, isn't this the one that has the law now, right, the nondescrip? Is this, no, that's the other one, right?
Policy AC. I guess I'll start, Jackie, if that's okay. Policy AC is the nondiscrimination, which we had, it's also JB. We had brought it forward before, so this would be your second read.
Well, I'm sorry, Carol's, can I interrupt you for one second? So I didn't, I wasn't sure about that, because we changed it so substantially.
Right, so it may not be the second read.
Right. Yeah, so I just didn't know if the committee wanted to do a first read, just because we completely redid it, or, I mean, you know, I'm not really sure what the best thing to do is.
I think it would make sense to, where it's a complete rewrite, to have this be the first read.
Yeah.
Jackie, do you want to say the intent of the rewrite?
Sure. You know, I think Lynn also included the old policies in there, too. So there was a lot of overlap between them, and it's really about nondiscrimination, right? So it just kind of made sense to us to combine them, to take kind of the best parts of both and apply for both. And then they would be put, the same policy would be put both in AC and JB. We just thought that was, that would be more appropriate than keeping the two policies separate, which they really should say the same thing.
Okay, so before, then, so JB and AC before were not, okay. Oh, there it is.
Were not what? Jen, I didn't hear what you said.
So they, so those, I'm now looking, they very clearly were not the same language before.
Right.
Clarifying that. And so J is in the student section, right?
Yes, yes.
A is in the, what's, which is section A, the sort of overall?
You're tricking us.
Governance, I think.
I know.
It's like, wait a minute.
A is foundations and basic commitments.
Okay, all right, yeah, that makes sense we wouldn't have a different view of nondiscrimination and equal opportunity, whether or not you're a student or you're everybody else.
Yes.
Okay.
Right, and, you know, it's not formatted perfectly, because I typed it. Obviously, this is something, you know, I can send to Lynn and have her put it in the right, in the right format.
So one small typo.
Mm-hmm.
See, about maybe two-thirds of the way down the first paragraph, not quite, a little more than halfway down, provisions, I think that should reissued by the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Oh, yeah, yep.
And not to open up a can of worms, but, let's see how far I want to go here. I understand that there is the potential for some of this to not be supported at the federal level in the future, right?
And that's going to come up in the next policy as well.
So across it.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of these could have to be changed down the line, but we can't kind of...
Change it.
We have to do with what the law is now, and if we need to change in the future, we'll change in the future.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so I think we'll, because this is a first reading, you know, committee members have the opportunity to take a careful read of the two and just make sure that we're not feeling like any important language got lost.
Yep.
Right, okay, great, thank you. So are we ready to move on to ACA?
Yep.
Can I, you guys have any questions on AC?
No.
Okay, all right.
So policy ACA is one that was written, it's the Title IX policy.
Yep.
And that, this language, this document was given to us directly from the law firm.
Okay.
And it encapsulates the new guidelines and law of Title IX as of August 1st, 2024. So should the committee voted in, we will remove the template language and add our language, or add our information, and then it should be all set.
So I think we, what we, Carol's, if I'm remembering correctly, what we wanted to discuss with them was what the, in brackets, the Title IX Coordinator for Students and for Employees, and the link, do we want to put in an office, a name, a title, how do we want to handle that?
I believe if it's consistent with the other ones, it would just be the office of...
Yeah, well, we put the title and then the office of, in this case, because we have, right now, as it stands, it's the Office of the Assistant Superintendent, who's the coordinator, but what was discussed is that that may shift to the Office of DEIA, and we also have an HR Director. So it's up to the committee whether you want to make a coordinator for students and a coordinator for employees, or just have one person oversee the whole thing. And then there's different, like, officer positions within Title IX, like investigator, coordinator, and so it's up to the committee how you all would...
But didn't we, I felt like we talked about this, maybe not, but didn't we just say, for purpose of the policy, you just put the main purpose, the main person in charge, and then they go, like, if somebody has a issue, they go to that person who directs them to all these other people? Maybe, didn't we try?
That was, that was another policy.
Okay.
So, too many policies.
So in practice, if there's a Title IX complaint today?
Yes.
What happens?
Okay, if there's a Title IX, well, anything that falls currently under the potential to be sexual harassment or harassment for a protected class, I'm sorry, protected class gender.
Gender and sexuality.
Gender and sexuality. The building contacts my office. I, we then stop the investigation completely, because I call the parents of the victim, the alleged victim, and I ask them, I explain the two processes for investigations, one being Title IX, and I go through the whole process of what the Title, I have to, it's actually federal law that I have to define what sexual harassment is. I have to go, which are three, there are three definitions. I have to go through the entire process of the grievance process that you would go through in a Title IX investigation, and I, and then I also have to share the written policies with them, with the parents. They have the right to decide to pursue a Title IX investigation or pursue a traditional school investigation, which follows the handbook. The school investigation is typically a quicker process, and in most instances, the school investigation is what is mostly chosen. However, it is something that, you know, we don't pursue any investigation until the parents or the guardians inform us of which investigation they like to pursue.
That's with a student. Also, with the new guidelines of Title IX, there's a lot of adult protections. So staff, person that is pregnant, kid falls under Title IX. So that's why we left the option of whether you all wanted to name one for a student and one for an employee. Either way, the way we've been, we're a team, so when we start to look at the facts and we see, oh, this falls under Title IX, well, I will confer with Chrissy, or we will both work with HR Director Denapoli. So either way, they will be supported, but if you want to delineate it, that's an option.
It's currently, currently, my office deals with students, and our Director of HR deals with staff.
So I think from that... So I think from that standpoint, it would seem to me to make sense to have your office be listed as the Coordinator for Students and then have HR be listed as the Coordinator for Employees, unless I'm missing something.
That does, that makes sense to me. I know that as far as the investigations and incidents of harassment are more particular to students, where the staff Title IX protections are more around rights and which could be accommodations, which would fall more under Director of HR.
So it falls into whoever the victim is? So if it was a, God forbid, a staff member with a student, then it would fall under your, your office?
Well, if there's an adult involved.
Right.
It would involve the collaboration of the two offices?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't think about, yeah, when you've got, what if you have a situation where you've got mutual complainants?
And that happens with bullying. We see that with bullying, like, there, there can be an adult bully of a child. There can be an allegation. And my office works with the Office of Human Resources, so.
And sexual discrimination doesn't occur under Title IX from a student to an adult. It would only be an adult to a student. That's a whole nother thing, exactly.
Okay, yes, why, I.
So if a student were to sexually harass an adult, that's something different?
That's not Title IX, correct.
So for the Title IX Coordinator for Students, we want to put down the Office of the Assistant Superintendent. And the Title IX Coordinator for Employees, we want to put down our Human Resources Department Director.
Director of Human Resources.
Director. Do we, the other thing Carol had brought up was whether we want to include the grievance procedures attached to this in the handbook? I mean, in the policy manual? Or do we want to have it somewhere else? Or how, how do you want to handle that?
It is listed in, in the current policy, but you don't have to.
I, I think it would make sense to have the procedures that, so the procedures themselves are a standalone document that's available on the website.
It's, I don't know if it's on the website yet, but it's because we, we were in revisions of this. But it is, I do send it to families if there is a Title IX, a potential Title IX investigation that might ensue. Any phone call I make, I send, I send the school committee policy and the grievance process.
I mean, I, I think it would make sense to house it somewhere that you could then just put a link to here. That way, you know, you, you don't have somebody who's running around with a paper copy of something that, you know, three years ago that we updated now.
Yep.
Yeah, and it can be like our bully, we have the bullying policy and then we have the bully prevention plan, two separate documents that live on the website.
Yeah.
So we could do that.
Yeah.
So we just need, we'll just need, we'll put in whatever link it is.
Yep.
And so in the last, in this next paragraph, to report information or make a complaint, please refer to. And we wanted to, I mean.
I think, wouldn't it just be the, the coordinators listed?
Right, so we don't have, we could actually just take this out since we put the coordinator ahead of it.
Yeah.
So maybe instead of saying inquiries about Title IX or to report information about conduct, maybe refer, you know, like, kind of, combine those two together.
Yep.
I like that.
Yeah, me too. Okay. So Lynn, so I don't have access to edit any of this stuff. So I can, we can either talk about it or if you want me to do the edits, give me access. I mean, we can discuss this later, how to, how to handle doing these edits.
So it is in the school committee electronic folder as a Google Doc?
But you can't edit it.
I can't edit it, though.
Oh, okay.
So is it just a matter of somebody granting you edit permission?
I think so.
Okay, all right.
Oh, your viewer, okay. I can change that. Now you can edit.
Thank you, that was easy.
Nancy, would you like that right, too?
I don't know, I'll let you know.
I did, I did give it to you, Carol, as well.
Thank you.
I will let you know. I trust these two.
Nancy has like 77 different versions of this.
I do.
Policy manual.
I have the paper.
I have, I have like a TJ Maxx shopping.
Yeah.
I'd get a buyer.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Right to my house.
I have two of them.
This is a bonding experience.
Yes.
Finders of notes.
I need a bigger table.
Okay, so JC is, JC and JCA are both the attendance areas and assignments of students.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Nancy.
Not to interrupt, but JB was the next one on our agenda. But that, we already kind of addressed with AC, correct? So JB and AC have got to be the exact same thing.
Yep.
Yes, okay, thank you.
We need to, before we go to the J's, the ACE.
Yep.
ACE.
So that's a second reading, though.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
So the, there, yeah, there are nine that are first readings. That's Agenda Item Nine. And then there's a few that are second readings on the Agenda Item 10.
Okay, so are we going to JC now?
Right.
For the first, okay. So JC is attendance areas. So this is one that we thought could be deleted since we have one school for each grade band now. We don't have multiple schools.
Ah, yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, I think that's one to delete and then just add to the appendix the reason why.
Yep.
And that changes in the future.
Yep.
Have a reference to how we wrote it.
And then JCA, the same thing, it's assignment of students to schools.
There's only one place they can go, so.
Yes.
Thank you, Brandt James.
Yeah.
And these are, the JCA is completely unrelated to, I think, the policy we've looked at fairly recently around, say, like residency and all that.
Yeah, yeah, there's different policies.
Okay, all right, okay, yes.
There's another one coming.
Yeah.
I agree with that, all right.
With JEB, entrance age, we just had some edits. If you're okay, I'll go through them with you.
Yes, please.
So the first one is in the title, to take out revised 2016. I'm not sure why that's in the title. The legal reference is incorrect, so we were going to put in the correct legal reference. And then we had a question on paragraph two of number one. The admission of children whose birthdays fall after September 1 will be solely at the school's discretion. I thought this was at the school committee's discretion, not the school's discretion. So I just wanted to go over that with you.
And we have had that situation in previous years, that it did come to the school committee to make that decision.
Or a particular student?
Yep.
Yeah.
That to me seems strange because we're not.
I don't know if it still ha, if this.
Well, because it's our policy, right?
This could have that also because the schools individually did registration, but now it's central.
So when I was a principal in a, for a, a building that housed kindergarten, that was the policy that it was up to me whether a child who was born after September 1st would be allowed. And we would do some assessments on the, on the child to see if they were, they were indeed ready. It would, it did not go to the superintendent or the, the, the school committee. It was up to the building principal. I know in discussions with our current administration at Land James, they're very strict on the September 1st deadline because it's not, it's, I've never met a, a parent who, who wished that they pushed their child forward instead of holding them back, you know? So I just, I think that, sticking to the, the, I, it was, it was also hard because the, like, for example, Brockton had a December.
They still do, I think.
No, they did change it, yes, they did change it. But they did have a December enrollment deadline, which then did trickle into the neighboring towns. And that's where, you know, this policy does seem to be, you know, advantageous for that situation. However, I just think that we're getting into a really sticky situation if we're allowing some students to come early, you know, when they're, when they're born after the deadline and picking and choosing because kids develop differently at different points in their, in, you know, in their developmental stages. So I don't know what, how you want to.
Well, I think, I think that's what has, so this was obviously when we had three different elementary schools. And there was some, and even application of this. And so we had a group of parents that came to us. So I don't, you know, and we didn't, we made the decision just based on, I can't, I mean, it was, I can't really go into it, but.
Sure.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I feel like I would, if this were the school's discretion, as the not early childhood education expert, I would take the advice most likely of the expert who would be the school. I, I, again, where we only have one school.
Right.
I, I can't imagine a situation where I would substitute my judgment for that of a principal or whoever the, doing the evaluation is.
All right, so then why don't we, we'll just leave it as is?
Okay.
Any thoughts?
Does that make?
I, I do, to, to Mrs. Pruitt's point, and I don't even know if this was your point, but, but.
It's getting late.
It is, it is. I feel like having it in here, it, it kind of opens up the invitation that, you know, it, that come one, come all and to have your child come to be evaluated early if you want to not have them in private preschool for another year. I mean, it, it, I, I don't know if there's a, a way that we can remove it or, or make it more tighter in the language that it's, it's not really common practice.
Is there anything in the model policies that?
I didn't, I didn't look at the model policies for this.
Okay, maybe we can take that as homework to just look at the model policy. I, I, I understand, I think I, I understand your concern. I mean, it's, it's the existing policy, it's already been there. It, it hasn't opened up the floodgates. And I, I do think we need, there needs to be some flexibility, right? Because there are.
There's always an exception.
Yeah, true exceptions where it just would not make sense, you know, for a student to, you know, maybe not enroll for.
Well, and since it's, you know, now there's one person making all the decisions for kindergarten, there aren't three different people making those decisions.
But if there were twins, one was born on September 1st, the other was born on September 2nd? You know, that would be, that would be a good, a good situation for this policy to be in place.
The DESI guidance, so 603 CMR 8, does say that each school committee may establish its own minimum permissible age for school attendance, provided that such age is not older than the mandatory minimum age established, which is six, the age of six by the beginning of September. But this is a first read, so you all can read it on your own, 603 CMR 8.
And you said the six-year-old was, reference was for first grade?
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten.
Not, not that they have, not that they have to be six, they can't be older than six.
Right.
Right.
Okay, all right, so we can take that away. Ready to move to the next one? So we've got, following the agenda, this would be JF dash E dash one.
Yep. Yeah, this we had thought about deleting, too, because all it's really doing is restating the law. It's not restating it correctly, but it's, the purpose is just to restate the law. So, you know, we're not doing this for other policies. We referenced the law and somebody can go look it up. So it just didn't make a lot of sense about why this was in here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree, and it just puts us in a position of having something be out of date.
And illegally referenced.
Yeah, and it bugs me that there are hyphens in the file name and there aren't for everything.
We talked about that.
We are so cut from the same cloth.
We talked about that.
Who thought policy readings could be so fun?
Every week.
Should see the subcommittee.
Yeah.
All right, JFABC.
So the only change we had to this is the legal reference doesn't make any sense. So we would just take out the legal reference. And I just thought we'd just add in a cross-reference to JF, which is school admissions.
So what does Chapter 12, Section 11 of the Acts of 2010 actually reference to?
I honestly couldn't find it, so.
You know I'm going to be Googling that.
Yeah, some of these references, honestly, are just.
Find it in the archives.
The next one is the homeless students, JFABD. So we talked a lot about this because this is, you know, it references No Child Left Behind, which was replaced by Every Student Succeeds. But a lot of the language has changed. For example, the, the reference to foster, for children awaiting foster care are taken out, unaccompanied minors and migrant children are added into the law. And we were just doing the editing, but the more I read our policy and the more I read the law, I just would feel better if we, as a subcommittee, we update it, but that we run it by legal first just to make sure we're not leaving out any language that needs to be included.
Okay, so the one that we have is, this is the current version?
No, this is an outdated version.
I'm sorry, yeah, this is the one that's.
In the policy.
And that's, that, yes, our current policy.
Yes, yeah, it's in our policy manual, yes.
Okay, so I'm looking, did we get the revisions?
No.
No.
Because I couldn't, I couldn't go in and change the document. But before we bring the revisions back to you, I would like to do the revisions, send it to legal, make sure we are really compliant with the law in how we're writing this up, that there's nothing that we're missing, because there were substantial changes to it.
Okay. And are, is homeless still a word that we're using?
Yes.
Or is it on how?
Yes.
Is that homeless a specific meaning within?
There is, and, and in fact, there's, I just attended educational stability determination meetings for, for the Easton Public Schools and with, with other districts throughout, throughout the Commonwealth. They have a very robust office in DESI in collaboration with DCF. I would even, I would even suggest potentially running anything by. I would even, I would even suggest potentially running anything by them as well to cross-reference, because the rules and the, the guidance, the laws are extremely strict, um, in a, in a positive way for, for these.
Yeah, e- even the definition has, from what is in here, has changed.
Yes, absolutely.
I'm probably saying something that you guys already know, but MASC on their website has sample templates of policies.
Yep.
That we can reference.
Yes.
Okay.
So, yeah. Yeah, we haven't had the.
Go ahead, go ahead, Jackie.
No, 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 no.
Go, go, say it.
Several years ago.
Drink a water, what?
Several years ago, we had, um, MASC help us with our policy manual, and it, it, it just didn't go as we would have hoped. I'm just going to leave it there.
All right.
Okay.
So I knew I was going to say something that you guys already knew. Wanted to throw it out there.
Thank you.
All right, so this one, we will expect to see a red line of J F.
Or a whole, or a whole new policy.
Yeah.
Okay. And then.
That's it.
That's it, okay, so now we're on to, uh, are we doing G B A first and then A C E? Or are we going alphabetical order, whichever you like?
We might as well go G B A first.
Okay.
Yes, so we, we didn't make any changes to this. We decided to leave this as a standalone because it, it, although it is another nondiscrimination policy, it's, it talks about employment rather than, um, conduct in the school. So we just thought this should stay its own policy.
Okay, what was the revision from September 26, 2024?
There was no revision.
Okay.
Yeah, because it says revised on this copy.
Oh, from. Yeah.
It says revised on what copy?
On the.
The copy that's in our packet has revised dates of June 24th, 2016, and September 26, 2024.
No, I don't have that on mine.
Okay.
That was the first reading.
Okay.
To which we had no recommendations.
Okay.
So it really should say reviewed. That's where.
Right, so we can, yeah, we can, we'll add that to the bottom review, the reviewed language that legal had suggested we use.
All right, and then, um, A C E.
So the only, um, change we had on this is under compliance coordinator. Instead of saying, "The district shall designate at least one employee", we thought it should be changed to, "The superintendent or designee shall coordinate its efforts." If that makes sense to you all.
Makes sense.
The terminology handicap, does that also have meaning? Still what is being used, yeah.
Good with that, so this was our second reading on this one?
Yeah, so we can vote on this.
Okay.
Because we made a change.
Okay, so let's, um, we'll, I guess we can hold, yeah, so let's set that aside, maybe vote on, we'll get to voting after.
Well, th- these are the only two in this one.
Yeah.
Did we do, well, we did.
It's G B A and A C E, those are the only two we're voting on.
Okay.
And G B A, I don't know, do we need to vote if we didn't make any changes?
No, because you said.
Right, I think, didn't legal say you didn't have to?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. You can add a review date so people know.
Right, that's what, yeah.
Yeah, no, we said we're gonna, um, Lisha, we had talked to legal, and she gave us the language to add at the bottom for review dates, and she said we didn't need to vote on that when we, when we added it.
Perfect. Okay, all right, so we don't need to vote on G B A. And then, um, so I make a motion to approve file A C E with the revision to compliance coordinator, the first phrasing which will read, "The superintendent or designee shall coordinate its efforts." Shall coordinate just efforts, not the word its. The superintendent into an.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so.
Good.
Can I get a second on that?
DeLuca's second.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Yay! Seven thousand more to go, okay.
Sorry. Next item are policies A C A B, harassment and bullying prohibited, and J I C F B bullying prevention. So this we have as a discussion.
Right, because this, this policy that, that was in your packet is on the school manuals, um, this is the correct policy. It just needs to replace what's in our policy manual. Our policy manual just wasn't updated to include this, we had already voted on this. So Carol's, am I right on that?
So, the school committee voted on policy J I C F B, but J I C F B is also A C A B. But we did, but the school committee did not vote on adopting it to A C A B, so that is the discussion today.
Okay.
It's the same language, just needed a discussion.
And it needs to be, even for J I C F B, the, this was not put in our policy manuals, the updated one, I believe?
Right.
It is, it, there's a, Lynn is going through the policy on the website, the policy manual to make it more user-friendly.
Okay.
So people can just go into the sections. So if you go under the school committee tab, go on the school committee page, and click on policy manual, it is the correct one.
Okay.
But if there's others floating out on the website, which we can check, but we did for other purposes, and J I C F B is up to date, it's A C A B that isn't. But it needs to be because on the, uh, the language, it says also A C A B.
Okay, so prior, prior to the update we made to J I C F B, A C A B and J I C F B were the exact same language, just with different headers that said this, also that, and then flipped that around, okay?
And they live in different sections of the policy.
Okay, okay.
Do they need to live in?
And I think we had discussed this before, right? So that, so for example, um, well, the front of the, the, the section A is, is general governance, and section J is student-specific.
Right.
That there isn't, that bullying in the school district only applies to students. There's not, I think we talked about this with Rebecca, there's not a reciprocal bullying prevention for staff? Is that, that, am I confusing that?
So staff can bully students.
Yes.
And students can bully students.
Yeah.
But students can bully staff.
Right. Can staff bully staff?
Yes.
That is, uh, not called bullying, it's called another legal term, which I'm not quite sure, so I don't want to say.
That wouldn't fall under a bullying policy.
Gotcha, okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, the bullying policies all driven by the bullying law, which is a protection for students, not adults.
Okay, thank you, get that.
Adults have other protections.
Yes, all right, thank you, that, yeah, it's, it's ringing a bell, so I'll come back now. Okay, all right. So then, we don't, we don't have a vote, we didn't call this a vote, but I think Lynn had actually clarified for us that we can vote on items without explicitly calling them, voting items if necessary. So for this one, um, would you like us to vote to update policy A C A B with the text from policy J I C F B? Is that what?
I believe that's what we want, right?
Sure.
Okay, okay, so, um, so I make a motion then to adopt the language of J I C F B as a replacement for the current language in policy A C A B.
So Loomis.
Okay, and can I get a second?
DeLuca's second.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Star, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Okay, all right, and thank you, um, Carol's for all of your work on this, I know, and Nancy and Jackie. Having your expertise in the district is hugely helpful for all of us, so thank you.
Yes, it is. As the former bullying coordinator. Having Carol's oversee this has been, has been absolutely fantastic and just her, her expertise is phenomenal.
It's complicated, and it's just helpful to know that, you know, we're, we're doing it the way it should be.
Yes, absolutely.
And have all of the documents correct, so great stuff. Okay, um, so welcome back, Dr. Bo. Thank you, sorry about that. It's okay, um, so next up, we have public comments. I do not see any public comments today, so we've got right on cue, superintendents.
Okay, so, uh, I will not talk about pace, I presume you can do that.
Yeah.
I will say that we recently met, Andrea and I recently met with Bill Whitcomb. Whitcomb, who is a family member of Witson, our food service provider, and the originators of the company. Uh, he has come to the district twice already, uh, and I met him also at the mask conference, mask, mask conference. Uh, we have been talking about working on our food services. Again, the quality of the food is great, their ideas are great, we continue to have a labor issue. So while we did talk about some creative things, and I have asked him to investigate some regional offerings that are where they can have people coming to, um, just a couple of examples, uh, around the world is, is something that we would like to have, where they have foods from different cultures regularly. An educational piece, for example, where they have someone at the cafeteria with samples of things and explain the nutritional value and how it's a superfood, or what you can mix it with to make it more flavorful. A lot of different things that we'll be bringing to you. But I did tell him that, uh, as excited as he was to try to get a lot of them going, we still have a labor issue. And so we did try to brainstorm some other ways you may have seen on your way in. They did provide us with some phone boards for all of the schools, and also they provided me with an electronic version that I can send out as a mass notification for some very specific positions they're looking for. They actually have some managerial openings and where people may be more interested than the other positions, perhaps if they have a different skill set that we've advertised in the past, so we're going to continue to keep doing that. They've also been utilizing some regional staff. We have had a guest chef coming in and doing these pop-ups with the kids. I think they had a honey chicken and waffle sandwiches that were from, I wish Marvel were still here. It was supposedly a huge hit at the high school. We talked about bringing back salad bars and sandwich bars and a lot of other things, but they have to have people. And so I bring it up because if anybody knows of someone looking for a position as food service, which has the, the middle-of-the-day hours, perfect parent hours, caregiver hours, or someone who may even be looking for a more managerial-type position, please look for those, or call us, or call Witson's, we'd, we'd be happy to, to connect you with Witson's. The sooner we can get that going, the sooner we can implement these ideas that we're really very excited about. The other item I have is our security project, we continue to work on that. It is going to town meeting, I know you will bring up town meeting, which you always do, which is good, on November 18th, which is this Monday, it is part of the capital requests, is the funding for our security project. Once that voting is done, if it is successful, we move full steam ahead. We're already, we're past 60% of our design right now for the project, and we'll be able to get that done on a much faster timeline. So if you are interested in supporting the security project, please come to town meeting and express yourself. Well, how you vote is up to you, but however you feel about the project, please come and speak to it in town meeting. The R O playground, unfortunately, we have not gotten anywhere with that. We continue to have problems with the Corkeen, and we have not the, the, uh, not the install, the manufacturer is not following through with what they have assured us, that they will come on-site, do forensics, do a temporary fix, they have not done that. We are contacting them every single, a couple times a week. They have not responded except to say, "We're trying to get a team there, we're trying to get a team there, we're trying to fly people in, we're trying to do this and that," and nothing has been done. We are exceedingly concerned about the cracks. While they haven't necessarily grown significantly in the last couple of weeks, we are, know, being from New England, that once the water gets in there, freezes and expands, we're going to have some huge problems on our hands. So in addition to South probably not being open until next summer, it is possible that at some point North could also be closed until next summer. So we are facing that possibility, we will have alternative plans in place. Kids will have recess, we'll work it out, but, um, we're doing our best to make sure that we can make the Corkeen successful. So at town meeting floor, we are going to, there was a warrant article to not get rid of the amendment that was very specific about the surfacing that could be used, but just to loosen it a little bit, to give us the opportunity that if, we're going to pursue the Corkeen till the end of the earth, as, as long as we can, we want this to work. We want to make sure that the will of the residents is, is, follows through, that is our goal. If, however, the company deems that for whatever reason it's just not possible to remediate, we need a little bit of latitude to do something different, and the sooner we can do that, the sooner, not only can we open the playgrounds, but we can minimize any liquidated damages that we're going to have in costs to the installer, costs to the designer for extending this project any further. With the next town meeting being at the end of May, we just need it to get to 50 degrees three days in a row. That could be the end of March, it could be early April. We could, we could really put a stopgap measure in here if, as I said, the Corkeen ultimately fails. The goal is for the Corkeen to work, and hopefully at that point it does, we don't need that language at all. But at least if the residents support it, we will have a little bit of latitude to try to resolve this very significant, uh, problem that we have. And finally, we got a fourth award for Blanche Ames. I just found out about it before the meeting, so even Mr. Cedarbaum doesn't know this, but he will find out very soon. We received an international award for the design of the building. This is the American Architecture Awards, we received an honorable mention. This is now celebrating its 29th year. This is the Museum of Architecture and Design in the European Center for Architecture, Art Design and Urban Studies. They are pleased to inform us that the Blanche Ames Elementary School has received honorable mention for the American Architecture Award of 2024. Now in its 29th year, the American Architectural Awards are the nation's highest and most prestigious distinguished building awards program that honors new and cutting-edge distinguished building awards program that honors new and cutting-edge designs in the United States. This annual program organized by both institutions promotes American architecture and design to our public audience in the U.S. and abroad. This year, the museum received a record number of projects for new buildings, landscape architecture and urban planning from the most important firms practicing in the United States and globally. We first were put on a short list of 500 projects, and a distinguished jury selected 150 projects and 50 honorable mentions, of which we were one. I am very excited about this. We just put out a press release about the first three awards, and we're just, I guess, going to have to do another. Huge shout out to Perkins Eastman, our design firm, Don Guarriello, Dan Colley, Bob Bell, and the entire team, who really did outdo themselves in terms of hearing us, hearing what the residents said through us, making this building really responsive to the needs and wants of the residents of Easton, the smallest children of Easton, respecting the nature, the history, the legacy of Blanch Ames. And now it has been nationally recognized by distinguished
International.
Experts in the field.
International.
Internationally recognized by distinguished experts in the field. So I wanted to make sure to tell you, since I just found out like just a few hours ago, but we will share that information with the public as well. Easton should be really proud of that.
It's great.
Beautiful building.
That is great.
It's so fun looking at Jackie, because she's like a proud mama.
I know.
And that's all I have.
All right, Assistant Superintendent notes.
We, as you, as I referenced earlier in the evening with Marvel here, we had our professional development day last week. It was a very successful day. We had approximately 20 sessions for teachers to choose from. So it was more of a choice. It was set up as more of like a menu of, of professional developments for people to attend. I will just say that most of our administrative team actually ran sessions, which was fantastic. It was great to have that. We, we have, our professional development team has been hearing feedback from staff about, while we love to hear from staff, it's nice once in a while to just sit back and, and, you know, be, be participants rather than have them lead some of the sessions as well. So, so we did have some staff participating as facilitators of sessions, but a lot of, a lot of our administrators were actually running sessions. And that's really all I have for you this evening. We have, we are very lucky because the N C T E, the National Council for Teachers of English Conference is here in Boston this year. So we are sending a lot of our English teachers from the high school and, and middle school. I met with Kristin Marani, our department chair, this afternoon, and she was just very appreciative that we're able to have a national conference here in Boston and have them attend. So Mrs. Kavanaugh and I will be meeting with them afterwards to hear their debrief and talk about how to share their professional learning throughout the district, which will be fantastic. And then we also have our title, our annual Title I conference coming up, where Ann Weintraub, myself, and our two literacy coaches in our two Title I schools, which is Blanch, I'm sorry, Richardson Olmsted and EMS will be attending. And again, thinking about how do we share out the messages that we hear with the rest of the district? How do we share our learning? So that's constantly in our minds as we proceed. That's all I have for you.
Thank you. School committee notes. Nancy?
You want to start with me?
Sure.
Well, I didn't know if Lauren wanted to go first or Jackie. Okay, here we go. Next week is American Education Week, so happy educators, happy students, happy everybody. And I think it's Wednesday is the ESP Day, which is a special shout out to paraprofessionals in, in all districts, I guess. Special Town Meeting, seven o'clock, OA Auditorium, Monday. And a lot of important items on that agenda. This weekend, Bay State Show Choir, well, they had a Bay State Show Choir performance, and I think, I want to say there were about 150 or 170 kids there, and it was an excellent, a very successful program and lot of nice, nice comments for OA. Jen, Lauren and I went to the M A S C, M A S S Conference, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Very interesting, lot of things in the world of school committees and school superintendents. So we're much smarter right now. Right?
Yeah, we learn a lot, yes.
This Thursday, a week from today, is the Moscato Mile at Oliver Ames. That's grade six, seven and eight will run a mile. And it's, I looked at the weather, it's not going to rain, but it's not looking warm, so run fast, bring your cozies. But, and some of the kids are like, why do we even do this? And why are we doing a mosquito mile? That doesn't even make sense. And I said, it's not mosquito, it's Moscato. So he was a, Val Moscato was a teacher at Oliver Ames, science teacher, and then he was also a coach of many sports. And then he became athletic director, and he's quite a character, quite a man. So I tell, and when it started, when the Moscato Mile started, Richardson Olmsted was not built yet. That was a huge field over there. We had, that's where people practiced. This school was built, but there was a huge field. So the phys ed teachers brought their classes out, and they, and it was a mile. They wrote, they ran along the perimeter of that, those fields that were around the school. And that was the first Moscato Mile. They did that for a few years, and then once Oliver Ames was pretty set with their new stadium and everything, which was named after Mr. Moscato, they had the Moscato Mile. And it, and now it's got music, and people are getting awards and your pictures in the yearbook. But I tell the kids years ago, so this is kind of funny, sorry.
It's okay.
Sorry. So Mr. Moscato's son, Craig Moscato, was a coach and football coach, and he also owned Honeydew Donuts, a few of them in the area. And also, the, the school had a contract with Gatorade. So when the kids finished running the mile, this made perfect sense because you just ran a mile, here's a Gatorade and here's a donut. So the kids now are like, why do we get that? And I go, because Michelle Obama says it's not healthy, so you can't do it. They're like, who? This is how old I am now. Okay, so anyway, that is like at 8:30 in the morning next Thursday. And then I think I'll let somebody else talk about the signings.
There are rain dates about the Moscato Mile.
What?
We may have a family member coming for the
Oh, for the Moscato Mile?
Yes.
Good. There are family members, yes.
No, no, not, uh, sorry, the Moscato family.
Yeah, no, there are, that's what I was going to say. There's family members, yes. So I will let somebody else do the other thing.
Talk about signings, okay.
I think that's it for me.
All right, thank you.
Sorry to, blah, blah.
I love Nancy's story time, it's always a treat.
I'm old, okay.
It's really interesting. I like when you do that.
When the kid said mosquito, I'm like, funny. And that was the other thing, Mr. Moscato loved track and field, so he, well, that's a story for another day. Okay, I'm done.
Jackie?
No, I certainly can't follow that.
Jackie, see? Jackie, come on.
No, but I really appreciate the history lesson, that was great, thank you Nancy.
Well, I think it's great to see you, and you're doing great, so thank you.
I agree.
All right, Lauren?
Okay, so as was mentioned, last week, I was at the M A S C, M A S S joint conference, and I look forward to sharing a lot of information that I learned of different sessions that I attended. The biggest takeaway, I would say, was that, yes, there's things that we can bring to the district and improving and, and always reach higher, but we are in great shape. And we do things that, like, people have no idea about, and that we're really lucky that we have such a supportive administration and supportive teachers and supportive town and just everything that so many communities don't have. And we're, we're just so lucky and so fortunate. Also, yesterday, I had the pleasure of attending the national signing of letters, what is it?
Athletic.
Athletic commitment signing. So I was only there for a small portion, but I saw cross-country and track and field signing. There were two, two students that are, one is going on to Lafayette College, and the other is going on to Holy Cross. So it was really, it was a really nice little ceremony. Athletic Director McDonald and her team did a really great job. So that's all I got.
Okay, all right. Let's see, so the superintendent advisory committee meeting was last week, and we got a preview of the strategic plan, which will be presented to the school committee in fall at, I believe, our next meeting.
December 5th.
December 5th. So anyway, those meetings are always, it's just great to meet with other members of the Easton community who have, who are interested in collaborating and making, you know, helping us be a better district and, and helping, you know, make, make our community stronger and better and more cohesive. So it was really great. I think we had good discussion and good turnout for that meeting, so that was really good. PACE, the Promoting a Sustainable Easton Committee, that work continues. We had, there was a meeting last week, a meeting next week, so we're meeting every two weeks. The materials are out on the town website, and the committee is focused on getting the word out about the work that has been done so far. So it has been more than 20 hours, 25 plus hours of a deep dive by the committee members into the town's, the town's finances, and we are working hard to consolidate that into messaging that does not take 25 hours for voters to learn, right? So, so be on the lookout for PACE materials, links to the website, a, a one-pager with some information. And open house is, is that scheduled for January 8th, I think? I don't want to misspeak, but
It's just, I thought it was December.
It's January.
January, yeah. January 8th, yeah, so we have an open house, January 8th. At, it's currently right now scheduled for Queeset House.
Six to eight.
Six to eight P.M., so you can come learn all about the project, ask questions, get information, and hopefully, members of the community will, will show interest in, in, you know, learn about all the stuff that we've been working on. And then I think we'll have a table at the special town meeting next week. So hopefully an opportunity there to, again, just get some, you know, hand out some basic information. And I think we'll be talking, maybe make a brief statement at the meeting. So getting the word out wherever we can. Sports report, such a good sports report. So the cross-country teams won, the, the boys and girls won the hockey championships a couple of weeks ago. I was there, it was so cool. They, they'll have the top 16 come up. And we didn't win, you know, first place. Not the first, but it would be, you know, another school, another school, OA, 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 another school, OA, 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 OA. So their ability to win as a team is really, really impressive. So they carried that to the, to the state D1C sectional championships, and both teams finished second, and they are going to the all-state meet in Devens this weekend. So good luck to, to the cross-country teams for your final race of the season. Field hockey and girls soccer, as Marvel mentioned earlier, both of them ended their playoff runs within the past week, so congratulations to both teams on great seasons. Boys soccer, late breaking news, they won
Oh, good.
Tonight, right? That was, I'm not giving that, all right.
Yep, yep. We heard it, we heard it.
So, yeah, so one to nothing win is what we heard, so they move on to the final four. And they are, just as a reminder, two-time state champions.
Yep.
So going for a third. And then girls volleyball, for the first time in program history, made the semifinals, and they won. And so for the first time ever, they will be going to the state championship game at 11:00 A.M. Saturday in Billerica. And then also coming up, as mentioned earlier, on November 25th, we have the DEIA community meeting, which will feature the Beyond the Stereotype presentation. Which we are looking forward to that. And that was all I had. Okay, so our next meeting is December 5th, and with Yes, yeah, so. Everybody, hope parent conferences went well for everybody, and then we've got Thanksgiving coming up in a couple of weeks, which is always a nice little break. Hopefully we'll see everybody after that on the 5th. So with that, I will
We'll see everybody at town meeting.
That's right, yes, town meeting first, yes, yes. We will see each other a lot of each week.
And we're going to see a lot of the people that are watching us right now, they're going to see us at town meeting.
So with that, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, Loomis, second.
Roll call vote?
Nine o'clock is your limit. I want to see you after 10.
That was a guess from DeLuca, Jackie.
Yes, Wiseman.
Star, yes.
Loomis, yes.
All right. Good night, everybody, thank you.
Good night.